Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll so that we might establish quorum?
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
I'm here.
Councilmember Warren?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Hanson?
I'm here, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Chenier?
Here.
Councilmember Geta?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Councilmember Carr?
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg?
I am here. I would like to ask councilmembers Warren, Hanson, and Carr to please rise and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, which is standing one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first of what I hope will be many honors tonight for the three departing council members. Members, I've gone back and forth on this, but I would suggest that we recognize the outgoing council members at the end of the meeting. I've been working on the agenda here today. I think it may not be quite as onerous in terms of its length as originally thought. Working out a few things here. And I'd rather us end the meeting even if we start at 7:30 or something because I add up 24 comments by members alone here from eight members for three public servants who are leaving the city council, including the members themselves. So if that's all right, we will move the presentation and let us begin with the consent calendar.
So Mayor Steinberg, the closed session report, can we report out that there was no reportable action taken in closed section?
Okay, yes, there's no reportable actions. That's exactly right. Thank you so much for reminding me. And now we'll get to the consent calendar.
And for the record, I have no public comment callers on the consent calendar.
Okay. Are there any?
Consent is being moved in second.
Is there any council comments or matters members want to hear from separate?
Here, I have some comments, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Steve.
Mr. Hens. Thank you. There's two items on here that our staff have worked on quite a lot, and I'm very grateful to the efforts, particularly the Public Works and Parks Department, on the Wind Park building renovation to get it to cold shell. This has been an effort over five years with a lot of folks. I'd like to thank Isabella Argueta from my staff, Ezra from Facilities, and James Christensen, Howard Chan and his team. This has been a complicated historic project to renovate. And I also want to thank Michael Jasso's team, particularly Valerie, who's going to help with the teneting piece that's going to come next. And then just, that was item 10. And on item 11, councilmember Harris and I, Vice Mayor Harris and I, have been working for quite a while to make the intersection where our street crosses 29th and 30th safer for people with disabilities, particularly those who have limited sight or who are blind. And we've struck an agreement with our city staff and regional transit to partner on a project going to CACOG to design those improvements, those safety improvements, and that is item number 11 on the agenda. So thank you to the team for all that they've done, and I know that there's a lot of other good things. Maybe one last thing is there's some important projects in the CACOG list, and I don't want to belabor it, but the city staff worked long and hard to try to pull sort of strategic priorities as well as low-hanging fruit, things that could be done quickly into this list. That's item 20. And I think it represents both the tomorrow of what Sacramento needs to do as well as the future of what we need to do to thrive and grow as a region. So thank you to Ryan Moore and his team, particularly Lucinda and Jesse, for their work on that.
Mayor, I have a comment also.
Yes, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
On what Steve said, yeah, you know, the crossing of 29th and 30th by light rail has been difficult for a long time, so I'm very gratified to see this moving forward. It's also on the CACOG list, but as well, environmental planning for a bridge across the American River. You know, this is really a key project, in my opinion, for the city of Sacramento, and I'm really grateful that CACOG is taking a look at this. Hopefully, we'll get funding to move this project forward. It's essential to the Green Line. It's essential to get to the airport. Should the zoo end up in North Tomus, it would be, you know, it would help with implementation of that move. It's a really key project in so many ways to connect the north part of the city with the south part, south of the American River. So really great stuff. I just wanted to point it out, and thank you, Steve, for calling attention.
Very good. Are there any other comments on the consent calendar? If not, let us call the roll, please.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. Very good. Let's now move to the discussion calendar. I'd like to take items 21 and 22 together, if we could. One is the audit of the city's green efforts, and the other is the 2020 Climate Implementation Work Plan, and, yes, authorize the first of many slow-streets projects here. And so I know there may be different staff leaders, including the city auditor, who are presenting, but let's just take it, take them in order, and we'll discuss as a council and as the public, both issues at the same time. The item dies for a lack of a second.
Hello? Can you hear me now?
You're on. Your PowerPoint is on and your voice is on.
All right. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
All right. Great. So, good evening, members of the city council. Jorge Argueta, you're city auditor. With me today are Lynn Bishan, Jordan Sweeney, and Joyce Chi, who were primarily responsible for completing this project. The recommendation that is before you is that you pass a motion by two-thirds vote to temporarily suspend council rules and procedures to bypass the Budget Audit Committee, and once that's settled, to pass a motion approving the city auditor's audit of the city's green efforts. So if you could pass a two-thirds motion, I'd appreciate it.
We need to do that right up front?
Yes, please.
Okay, this is procedural. Moved by councilmember Geta, seconded by councilmember Chenier. I knew you were going to move it, so that's why I called you. Please call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. All right. Let's get right to the item.
Perfect. So the city of Sacramento is committed to supporting and further advancing green efforts, both within its local government operations and throughout the community. The city aims to mitigate negative impacts such as greenhouse gas emissions, pollution, dependence on non-renewable resources, or excessive use of natural resources. The city's various green efforts typically fall into one or more areas noted on this slide, which include things like reducing greenhouse gas emissions, water conservation, and energy efficiency. The objective of this audit was to evaluate the city's green efforts and to analyze potential barriers to implementation. Our scope primarily focused on efforts within municipal operations. During the audit, we conducted a citywide employee survey, interviewed staff, analyzed vendor data, assessed energy usage and costs, calculated vehicle fuel costs and usage, and reviewed general sustainability procedures. In this audit, we have three findings and 26 recommendations. Our first finding is that improved monitoring and reporting of sustainability data progress and outcomes is essential for tracking impacts and realizing the intended benefit. Incomplete performance metrics can limit the city's ability to evaluate the effectiveness of its programs, which could hinder timely progress towards the city's sustainability goals. Upon assessing the city's monitoring and reporting procedures, we found that inconsistent tracking and reporting of sustainability metrics may be creating sustainability shortfalls. Inconsistent performance tracking over time hinders sustainability progress, and improved energy data management is needed to address data integrity issues that hinder the city's ability to produce more reliable analysis and ensure accurate energy billing. As an example of an accountability shortfall, when interviewing Parks Division staff regarding goals on low-water-use landscape published in the 2016 Climate Action Plan, we were informed that neither they nor other department's key staff members had made these goals, were aware of these goals, or were formally tracking relevant progress. Such a communication gap on the expected goals prevents these program managers from demonstrating progress or improvement towards published performance measures. After becoming aware of these targets and metrics, the Parks Division revised their goals and began formally tracking progress. During audit, we reviewed the city's various plans and reports as they relate to sustainability progress. This figure is an example of our review and tracks how specific action and progress is reported to the city's annual sustainability implementation plans from 2008 through 2011, the only years that were available. These are the only sets of annual reports specific to sustainability. Although these plans appear to establish some continuity over time, we noticed some inconsistencies in how progress were translated to the next year, as shown in yellow, pink, and red lines. More specifically, we observed that there is often a lack of detail explaining why action targets were not met, repetition of goals without any reported progress, and not all actions were reported in subsequent years. Without clear performance tracking, the city cannot determine how well the original goals were met, nor can it appropriately identify performance trends or identify why anticipated progress is falling short. In reviewing the data used by the city in the various sustainability efforts, we noticed some data integrity issues with the city's street lighting inventory. We noted the various sources did not agree with the number of streetlights that operate within the city and did not identify the number of streetlights under each billing rate. The bar graph shows that there are slight variations between the two available itemized data sets for two fields, streetlight wattage and lamp type. We conducted a deeper review by reviewing individual streetlights by service number. As shown in the table, we did not find potential matches for many of the streetlights we sampled. Inconsistent data fields and an incomplete internal data set can interfere not only with key operational decisions but also with the cost of the city's utility bills. During the audit, staff expressed willingness to reconcile the data sets and have facilitated meetings to initiate the process. In finding one, we had 10 recommendations for the city manager's office and the Department of Public Works. These recommendations focus on better monitoring the outcomes of green efforts, initiatives, and projects, and improving data integrity overall and for specific operational areas. Our second finding is that centralized management and oversight of the city's sustainability efforts may better position the city to establish sustainability as an organizational priority and core values. The city has long branded itself as a leader in sustainability through its accomplishment of many green projects and the establishment of multiple strategic plans. Despite this dedication, there does not appear to be a designated city entity leading sustainability efforts within the city. Specifically, we found that the city does not currently have a formalized internal communication strategy or an officer entity directing its green efforts. Inadequate funding for sustainability projects is a barrier to prompt implementation, and not all city departments appear to have embraced sustainability as an operational priority. The city's current sustainability efforts are operationally siloed, and responsibility for monitoring goal progress falls under the respective departments. As such, the present communication approach towards these efforts appears ad hoc, and not all goals received direction for implementation. Furthermore, because there is no citywide prioritization process to ensure that efforts receive funding needed beyond the standard budgeting process, projects that may have positive environmental impacts and easily realized cost savings may not be implemented if funding is unavailable within the responsible department's operating budget or unattainable externally. It is for this reason that it is important that the city continue to move in a direction that centralizes leadership, identifies and prioritizes green projects for the city to invest in, and promote a consistent vision, as has been done with the establishment of a climate action lead within the city manager's office. To assess whether sustainability is a citywide priority, we reached out to all city departments and offices to ask about their sustainability efforts. We only reviewed complete responses from three departments, of which all had lines that directly overlapped with sustainability areas. We also conducted a survey of all city departments and found that city employees are engaging in behavior that may not be supportive of city sustainability efforts, which we elaborate more in the next finding. Green teams may be a mechanism to help implement an organizational commitment towards sustainability. We identified two groups in the city that may be considered green teams. The Energy Working Group, which is now inactive, and the city's current green team. However, while both groups engaged staff from various city departments and were formed with a designated purpose, neither group has formalized responsibilities or goals. Based on our review, we believe the city's green teams may be a missed opportunity to fully leverage employee interest, commitment, and expertise as a coordinated platform. For this finding, we recommended that the city manager's office work with other departments to evaluate whether more centralized oversight can better assist in implementing the city's sustainability goals and vision to improve internal communication and accountability, and to develop guidance on prioritizing goals. As previously mentioned, the city has already made progress in this area by appointing an interim climate action lead. Our final finding in this report is that awareness of and compliance with sustainability policies, procedures, and plans could be strengthened. To determine the extent to which employees are aware of and behaving in accordance with citywide sustainability policies, procedures, and plans, we distributed a survey to all city employees, assessed sustainability policies, and evaluated data from vendors. We found that approximately 44% of survey respondents are unaware of citywide policies, procedures, and plans related to sustainability. Paper consumption reduced by 50% in the last 10 years, but further reductions may be inhibited by sustainability culture and operational barriers. Excess idling offsets reduction in greenhouse gas emissions while also costing the city approximately $282,000 per year. And finally, that the city spent approximately $237,000 in the last two fiscal years on purchases that appear noncompliant with sustainability purchasing guidelines. We conducted a citywide survey to gauge employee awareness and adherence to sustainability guidance and reviewed 567 total responses. Based on the responses we reviewed from the survey, it appears that fleet sustainability policies and the general plan have the highest awareness rates, at over 50% amongst those that are overall aware with our green efforts. The remaining guidelines all fell at or below 33%. In assessing the various sustainability policies, we noted that one citywide goal is to limit idling to five consecutive minutes for all vehicles and equipment in the city's fleet. Although 84% of survey respondents who use a vehicle reported they have turned off their vehicle when not in use, we found that almost 1,000 vehicles, approximately 42% of the city's fleet, exceeded the five-minute idling limit during the sample periods that we did our testing. We found that excessive idling has emitted an estimated 842 metric tons of carbon dioxide in fiscal year 1819 and cost the city about $282,000 per year. Another policy we assessed is the sustainable purchasing policy, which instructs employees on how to sustainably purchase products. While the policy directs the city not to produce an annual summary of its sustainable purchasing actions, the city does not currently document or track this information. To determine compliance with this policy, we selected three vendors with citywide agreements that supplied items subject to these guidelines. As seen in this figure, 73% of purchases, most of which were electronics, appear to be compliant with the policy, but approximately 237,000 was spent on purchases that in the last two fiscal years do not appear in compliance with the policy, while about 200,000 could not be determined due to limited information on the vendor's website. We also noted that sustainable purchases may be more expensive than non-sustainable purchases. Although the policy states that all purchases shall be handled in a fiscally responsible manner, it is not clear whether a sustainable purchase exceeding the policy's cost threshold complies with or is not compliant with the policy. Our recommendation for finding three focuses on improving the notification process for updated plans and policies, ensuring that employees' resources are up to date, and developing processes to improve policy compliance. This concludes my presentation. I would like to thank the Department of Public Works, the Department of Utilities, the Department of Youth, Parks, and Community Enrichment, and the Department of Community Development for their assistance and cooperation during this engagement. I believe Jennifer Venema, the city's recently appointed interim climate action lead, would like to say a few words in response to our report. I'll turn it over to her.
That is great. And who is making the presentation on the following report? Is that Jennifer as well?
I believe so. I will be doing that next.
Okay, so if you don't mind, I would ask you to both respond to the city auditor's report and then just transition right into the other, because they really are related. And then we will have both of you and whoever else on your respective teams to be able to ask questions of and have a discussion, okay?
Fantastic. I'll jump right into my presentation, and we're happy to be here tonight. You should be able to see my PowerPoint screen. As Jorge noted, I'm Jennifer Venema, recently appointed as the interim climate action lead in the city manager's office. I've prepared a brief PowerPoint just to respond to the audit, and I do have a separate one queued up for the climate work plan, but we'll quickly segue through both of those. We really appreciate the hard work by Jorge and his entire team, and as he noted, the audit involved many departments, and we thank all of them for their work. So first, as Jorge noted, it's important to remember our history of strong sustainability leadership at the city, going back really over the last two decades. And this goes deep. We have numerous policies in many city plans, including the general plan, which established climate targets and addressed that twofold aspect of sustainability work, both in our operations but also for the community at large. We want to emphasize again that looking at the city's green efforts has been a very collaborative process. Key departments involved in the audit are shown on the screen. However, moving forward, really the biggest theme that we're taking in the city manager's office is what you heard from Jorge, the recognition of the role of strong leadership and the connection that this success has to stronger accountability. So moving forward, this will require building on our existing staff expertise and expanding capacity in our departments, especially with creation of a new position in the city manager's office. We've achieved a lot to date, but it will take more resources to go further. Also, we want to commend all of the work of our departments to date, which we're committed to build on support and really accelerate. We've achieved some remarkable milestones, as shown on your screen. These are also saving us money. Retrofits and solar projects to date are saving us an estimated $1 million per year, plus we have an award-winning zero-emission fleet. Newest data from the telematics system shows that this EV fleet operates at less than half the cost of our gasoline sedan fleet. Also importantly, we've exceeded our 2020 targets for municipal greenhouse gas emission reductions. We've achieved a 28% reduction since 2005, achieved largely through reductions in energy use and improvements in the vehicle fleet. Yet, the challenge we realize is that even as we've reduced energy use, costs are going, as you can see in these two figures. On the left, energy use has dropped for city operations by 34% since 2005, but costs continue to escalate. We pay over $13 million a year for energy alone. There's opportunity to better manage these accounts, and we're taking a closer look as recommended by the audit. Again, in some cases, this requires an upfront investment to do more than we have and to save money over the long term. And that concludes my comments on the audit, but consistent with these recommendations, we're also bringing a climate work plan, which is the next item on our agenda, item 22. So, Mr. Mayor and council, let me just switch PowerPoints, and we can jump right into that. So here we go again. As noted previously, my name is Jennifer Venema. As just said, I'm climate action lead in the city manager's office. I'm here tonight with many staff to talk about how we're responding to the audit, but also recent directives given to us by the city council. So what we're covering today in the climate work plan, item 22, we're coming to council with two recommendations. First, I'm going to give you an update on what this work plan consists of, requesting your feedback. Second, we are recommending that council pass a motion for Public Works to proceed with a slow-streets pilot. Again, these efforts are very collaborative, as implementation will be. You can see many of the key departments that have been involved on the screen, but all departments will be involved moving forward. So, city council understands the challenge. Based on our policies and the motion passed on August 25th, there's a recognition of the challenges we face and the need to do more. We are committed to respond to this climate emergency, to advance in a manner that's inclusive and equitable, in a way that makes jobs and leaves Sacramento a better place to live. All of this, even as climate impacts to the region are increasing, and we recognize that these issues often disproportionately impact the most vulnerable communities and those of color. So this is about really recognizing the opportunity we have to shift our direction towards the big, bold, transformational goals that council has adopted. So to get there, what we're bringing is a near-term work plan with urgent items to start in the next year, moving as directed, recognizing those longer-term plans and work underway, but work should start now. As you can see on the left, the top five issues we believe are the most critical to advance range across these issues here, but we recommend that first it starts with dedication of resources in the city manager's office to ensure that other actions happen and to provide that accountability, which Jorge was just highlighting as a challenge in the last item. Secondly, the plan involves establishing equity as a foundation for sustainability work. Lastly, for items three through five on this list, the plan involves a focus on major sources of emissions, namely that's energy and transportation, which contribute 94% of all local emissions in Sacramento. So these are the focus areas for near- and long-term work. Here, we rolled up estimates of unfunded needs into 10 categories that you'll find in the work plan. These build on both recommendations from the mayor's Commission on Climate Change and the Green Efforts Audit, but also pulling in staff's expertise and recommendations based on where we're at today. Pending your direction and feedback, next staff will work to recommend funding for this plan through the mid-year and budget process. To summarize, we identify a total unfunded need of over 3.8 million across city departments just to advance- just to advance these priorities in the next year. These activities would range from everything, including green jobs creation and tree plantings, to electrification of buildings. Now, this is a media slide, and I want to highlight three key actions in the plan that we believe are essential for shifting forward. These actions are complex, and I'm going to walk through just key considerations for each. So first, it's about, again, creation of the new program in the city manager's office to start the process. The investment of approximately $0.5 million will support almost all of the key efforts across the plan, again, providing that accountability towards our goals. While we've done a lot to date, we need to build up to do more. Secondly, building from the audit findings you just heard, staff recommend a $1.39 million investment in the municipal energy program. If we're asking private buildings to do more and retrofit, reduce use, we really need to lead by example and show how we can do it in city facilities in a way that saves money. So this investment would support FTE, yes.
Excuse me, I don't want to interrupt. I just don't want to lose this slide for a minute, because I just want to understand it, let the public understand it. The city council has not yet made the decision to invest the resources that you are just describing, correct? This is your recommendation?
Correct. This is a recommendation in a draft plan for your feedback, and then we would seek to fund pending that direction.
I understand. Thank you.
Great. So $1.39 million would allow for cost savings, retrofits responding to the audit, also the Energy Management Partners report. Lastly, staff is also recommending $100,000 investment to explore local options for new transportation funding. This task would culminate with staff bringing a discussion framework back to city council for feedback, recognizing transportation is the biggest source of emissions locally. Regional transportation funding measure, which is now on hold, would help us get there, but wouldn't close the whole gap that we need for the climate challenge. And other places have done this. The city of Austin recently passed a $7 billion package of propositions focused on mobility equity and supported by property tax. So this is an item we believe we need to look at at local scale, in addition to regional collaboration. And I'll just reiterate, lastly, efforts will be collaborative with a focus on equity and justice. We're testing and refining a racial equity toolkit, which is appended to the plan developed by our Civic Sparks fellows, working with our diversity and equity manager. We have also supported the launch of the Community-Based Environmental Justice Collaborative Governance Committee as the city council directed. There's an informational webinar on Wednesday, and the city is committed to participate as a partner in this effort. And we are also going to be formalizing the city's green team to ensure this percolates through all of our city efforts. The last item to recap through the work plan is acknowledgement of the near-term pilot for the Slow Streets concept. Pending council passing the motion tonight, we will proceed to procure materials using eligible CARES funds for up to $100,000 of expenses, working with neighborhoods to identify corridors for an initial four-to-five-month pilot to close up to six miles of roadway. Staff will work closely with neighborhoods and ready to launch a website pending action tonight, and will work with the community to move this forward. So to conclude, for item number 22, we are requesting direction on the draft climate work plan, where we've identified our recommended actions to respond to the audit and more, which would require $3.8 million to fully implement in 2021 and put us on the long-term trajectory. And we'd be recommending those funding opportunities through the mid-year or budget process. Secondly, we recommend council pass the motion to proceed with the Slow Streets pilot. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you very much.
Okay, Jennifer, thank you very, very much. Very thorough and a lot to think about. Do we have public testimony? Signed up, Madam Clerk, on the two items?
Yes, we have callers on item 22.
Okay, well, why don't we take the public testimony on item 22, and then we'll open up to the council on items 21 and 22 for question and discussions.
You may have our first caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. My name is Alicia Brown, and I'm representing Walk Sacramento, which is a local nonprofit dedicated to improving quality of life and health equity through transportation and community development. Walk Sacramento generally supports the city moving forward with the Slow Streets Pilot Program. However, we have several recommendations for effective and equitable program implementation. So firstly, we recommend that the program prioritize access to essential places in environmental justice communities, such as grocery stores, food distribution sites, COVID testing sites, and parks. The program must conduct in-depth, meaningful engagement in environmental justice communities, including in-person engagement and partnership with community-based organizations and essential businesses. The goal of this engagement should be to understand transportation-related challenges, desire temporary traffic safety improvements, and priority locations for Slow Streets implementation. Lastly, we would like to strongly urge the city that there should be no police enforcement or surveillance of Slow Streets. Instead, we recommend that the program provide funding to community-based organizations and residents serving or living within environmental justice communities to monitor those streets. This approach focuses on positive community-led strategies while also providing tangible economic benefits directly to our most highly impacted communities. So thank you for your time and for the opportunity to share our comments. We look forward to the Slow Streets Pilot Program moving forward with our recommendations taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, my name is Rosie Yakub. I'm a resident of District Four and a volunteer for 350 Sacramento. Really excited to see the city moving forward so quickly on the recommendations of the Climate Commission. I support these efforts, and I do urge the council to fund the recommended actions that Jennifer just spoke of. Having said that, it's great to see quick movement. It's not so great to see such a big gap between the predicted adoption and implementation of the all-electric ordinance. We need earlier implementation times than 2023 and 2026 for low-rise, high-rise. Every five to six metric tons of carbon dioxide you save is like taking a car off the road for a year and setting up one house with a heat pump and water heater and HVAC can save 34 tons of carbon dioxide over the appliance's lifetime. So you start multiplying that out. A thousand buildings could save 5,000 to 6,000 vehicle years of carbon dioxide. And since there's predicted to be over that constructed each year, that's over 12,000 vehicle years lost by not accelerating the timeline to 2021, just on residential, just on those two appliances. Leadership is needed. All-electric new construction is how the city ensures that more builders, installers, and suppliers of appliances begin to get the expertise and supply of the appliances we need to convert to renewable power in our homes. It won't happen by itself. Before I started working on this issue, I replaced a gas stove with gas, because I thought, well, since smud's burning gas, it doesn't matter. Well, now smud is planning to be all-renewable before my stove needs to be replaced. Recognizing our climate emergency, 2030 is now our target, and we all need to put our shoulder to the wheel to make the change. Let's move sooner on all-electric new construction. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, my name is Kate Wilkins. I'm with 350 Sacramento and live in District Five. I just wanted to say thank you to the council for the opportunity to comment on these items and bringing back your excellent staff to the meetings in the last few months with these fabulous details on the city's climate efforts. I want to urge the city to identify funding to fully fund the implementation plan. And kind of based on the city audit presentation, there seems to be a good need and reason to allocate city budget and invest in community-focused resources and prioritizing these actions. I think the city should authorize the implementation of Slow Streets and make sure there's no police enforcement or surveillance of Slow Streets during the pilot and beyond. I also think the city should mandate report outs from the Environmental Justice Collaborative Governance Committee and give them some more decision-making or at least priority-making power. I also strongly urge the city council to accelerate the implementation dates for the electrification ordinance for new construction. As I said, I live in District Five. I'm a renter. I recently had to have my gas stove replaced. I asked my landlord about getting an electric stove, but he demurred, because I live in a 1910 Victorian. It was going to be really expensive to update that electrical panel. And I want to make sure that that isn't a factor going forward for mortgage payers, you know, for a property they bought in, that's new in 2021 or 2022. That would really be a shame. San Jose and Oakland pass ordinances this month for all-electric new construction. They took effect immediately. San Francisco's all-electric ordinance is going to affect by June 2021. So I guess my question is why developers in Sacramento need so much more time than they do in other cities? Or what's different? It makes no sense to have more buildings. We're going to have to retrofit. It's already going to be such a huge challenge, very expensive. And I know different industries are going to be fighting hard against point-of-sale measures. So I don't want to make a future council's job harder. I urge the council to speed this timeline, and at the very least, please consider electric-ready construction, so these retrofits aren't so expensive. We look forward to working with the council, pushing for retrofits in the future to build electric and incorporating feedback and insight from these.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
We look forward to working with you folks and supporting Just Transition. Thanks so much.
Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening. My name is Sue Taranishi, and I'm a board member of Breathe California and chair of our Clean Air Policy Committee and also board member of the Sacramento Area Bicycle Advocates. And I'm calling to urge your support of the Slow Streets pilot and to fund it at the requested amount for this fiscal year. I also wanted to comment that there was an unfunded portion shown at $900,000. And I understand it's for doing three neighborhood audits. And I just wanted to comment that if there's a way that community organizations like Saba and Breathe can help do some part of those audits to lower the city costs, please develop a template or plan somehow to show us how we can assist. And since the pandemic hit, over 350 cities in the U.S. and around the world have allocated more street space for walking and cycling. And Saba's executive director, Deb Banks, had started working on getting Slow Streets pilot going in the spring. And with more people out walking and cycling now, we feel it's past time to give more space to safely accommodate these activities. And with transportation being the highest portion of GHG emissions, we certainly want to see more done to get more people out of cars and onto bicycles and walking for transportation. So thank you for your time. And again, we urge your support of Slow Streets and bicycling and walking in general. Thank you.
Thank you for comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is Amel Waboni from District Four. I am an officer of the Midtown Neighborhood Association. And Abby Jackson, the vice chair of our association, has joined me on the call. Thank you for this opportunity to address you. The Midtown Neighborhood Association submitted a letter to you today in support of authorizing the Slow Streets pilot project. We did not see the letter in the post and materials, so we wanted to call in to make sure we had drawn your attention to it and to let you know that MNA is ready to move forward with a sustainable city with a Slow Streets pilot project. MNA has been building a coalition of area neighborhood associations and business and civic groups to advocate for a set of streets on the grid to be slowed for purposes of active recreation and access to essential services. As part of our outreach efforts on Slow Streets, we put out a survey gauging interest in the concept. The results of that survey are posted on our website and show strong support among residents and visitors of Midtown for Slow Streets. In collaboration with our neighbors and the Newton Booth Neighborhood Association, we have proposed a route for slowing down. We are at this point awaiting direction and funding from the city and help in any way and are eager to help in any way we can. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more callers.
Okay, thank you very much. We do need motions on both items, I believe. But let's open it up to the city council. I know I've got some comments I can go first, or if there are other members. Why don't we go with Steve Hansen? Go ahead, Steve.
Mayor, thank you. And I want to thank both Jorge and Jennifer. As the last year has developed through the work of the Climate Commission and also sort of the redoubled effort of our city to understand our impact on the climate, to reduce our own greenhouse gas footprint as an organization, but beyond that, to reshape the built environment. I think that Jorge, you've shown us where we can be better, and that is one of the best things an auditor can do. Not always as fun as I once described in another council meeting. I won't relate that particular euphemism. But here, I think this does help us understand how we meet our goals. And so I'm happy to make a motion on item 21 to move the auditor's recommendation. But particularly, what I'm excited about is Howard's appointment of Jennifer Venema to lead our climate efforts. At one point, we had three Jennifers, and I notoriously would call them the three Jennifers of the revolution. Mayor, your Jennifer went back to work at Cal EPA, the air board. So now we have two Jennifers of the revolution within the city organization. They're both doing amazing work. But Jennifer, I think the work plan you laid out is fantastic on many fronts. And I think the challenge is only going to be how we intensify those efforts over time. And as daunting as that sounds, you've laid out a really good plan, but there are parts of it that we may need to continue to revisit to see if they need to be accelerated, how we're meeting them. I know there's a lot of interest in building electrification, and particularly how we as a city with our own buildings can electrify is going to be a challenge, particularly because many of our backup generators, even our large diesel thing, diesel generators, that don't meet this very important set of goals. In the Bay Area, we just saw Oakland pass an all-building electrification ordinance that has some caveats to it. So I think as you stand up the working group and as you work with various entities in the community, it's going to be important to see if we can accelerate part of that building electrification. I think the plan as it is now is a solid place to start, but may need some further refinement. And so, Mayor, you've been a champion leading us through the emergency declaration around climate change. You and Mayor Cabaldin called forward the commission that I had the pleasure to serve on on behalf of the city, along with so many others. And I just hope that this council, under your leadership, Mayor, continues to heed the call to fight climate change here at home, to think globally but to act locally. And the last part of this is really about making a motion around the slow streets. And Mayor, you may have your own ideas about it, but I'd like us to move post-haste on the slow streets, move fast to move slow. If I sound like Gavin Newsom, probably more watching too many press conferences. But particularly, the Midtown Neighborhood Association, the Newton Booth Neighborhood Association, has presented a very thorough plan. They've been enthusiastic as a partner, and I'd like to see their project included in the pilot. They seem ready to launch before the end of the year under the CARES Act timeline. And what I particularly love about the route and project that they've created is they're collaborating with other neighborhoods, which I think is good. But they've also taken advantage of our parking-protected bike lane on J Street and tied that into this potential Slow Streets loop. And I think that is really a phenomenal use of that particular infrastructure right now. So I'd like to make a motion that we advance item 22 as well with that direction to staff around the Midtown Neighborhood Association and the Newton Booth Neighborhood Association's proposed project.
That's great.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. There's a motion on the floor, but I do have councilmembers Geta and Vice Mayor Harris. Then I'm gonna, I have about an hour and a half worth of comments. Just kidding. So who's going next, Mayor? I think it was Eric, and then... Um, I I think it was Eric, and then uh then you, Vice Mayor, and then uh Councilman Carr. I see. Go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first, I I do want to uh, I want to thank uh uh Jennifer Venema for all the great work on this and also, Mayor, for your leadership on this issue and also all of the the community participants on uh that have been engaged in this work here. And I I do believe that the 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 community engaged that climate action-driven work is is going to be critical here. Um, I want to focus, number one, I do from the comments, from the public comment, I do want to support the efforts of of working with Sacramento Area Bike Association and Walk Sacramento on efforts of them being able to maybe do some of the audit work that could help the city. I think that's important. Um, I do also, uh, since Councilmember Harris already seconded the motion, I'll support the motions as well. But I want to focus on uh on a on a couple issues here. Uh, number one, um, the issue of uh of of not forgetting that that we, this needs to be tied with jobs and the ability of our economy, be able to move fast on that piece. And I know there's in the draft work plans at a glance, at a glance, uh, it's listed under workforce development, but I think there's a there's a bigger role, particularly when S M U D, our our utility provider, and the city's been engaged in the conversation with Sac State and UC Davis on the mobility center to create a new manufacturing uh entity here where we can do uh and provide a lot of the products and resources and solutions to for zero emission technologies and addressing our climate change challenges. So I think it's important that 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 be highlighted because if all we do is set policy and don't um look at how we create local jobs for our communities here, I think we're going to miss that opportunity, and other cities will uh will uh take that that role on. Just a, you know, uh, my uh Councilmember Hanson and Harris uh also sit on the air district. And when we funded the electric uh bus program, we were buying the uh, the the school districts were buying the electric buses from Vancouver and Lancaster. We need to be the ones that are are taking the lead on that because those are uh job opportunities. And when it comes to workforce, much like we did with the with the CARES funding to help uh, you know, workers who were displaced by COVID-nineteen and lost their jobs, we focused on communities that have been disenfranchised to retrain them into the manufacturing sector. I think that needs to be part of this, and uh we're we're intentional about uh environmental justice and environmental jobs. Those two things have to go hand in hand. And so I know that they're here in in the subset, but I think they need to be elevated in a higher priority because of uh, one, we know those communities are affected by uh a bigger issue when it's heat island effect, particulate matter, uh, or or just the overall air quality. Uh, and they may live in homes where we're also dealing with a poor air quality inside in those, uh, unlike some of our newer homes that have the insulation and the the those uh, the benefits that that come with that. So I think I'll leave it at that because I I do think there's a lot to go here. Like you said, the mayor can go on for an hour and a half here on this because it's so big. Um, but also I support the slow street concepts. Um, our our communities, uh, our neighbors here locally love to be able to have our streets be safe for all all our families. Uh, but uh, I just can't underscore that the the importance that if, as we move forward on addressing our climate challenges and goals, that that our economic strength as a manufacturing sector um and be focused on workforce uh and and helping those communities that need it. So with that, thank you again, staff, for all this great work, and I know we can do, we can make some significant change here in the lead.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Gedda. Vice Mayor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, the first thing I'd like to say is that climate change is absolutely and indisputably an existential threat to everybody, to basically the human race. And in doing our part to meet this challenge, uh, there are a lot of considerations. Councilmember Garrett brought up a really, I think, salient point about that we that we can address these challenges and gain some wins in the process, like bringing a lot of jobs locally into the green economy. So it's through those lens, I just want to make a couple more comments. First, as far as uh Jorge's green audit, what stands out to me there is that we are lacking in communication and performance metrics. And as we move forward, you know, we really need to do better in that regard as a city. I felt this way for a long time, that we come up with great ideas, we implement projects, but we don't track them. We, you know, for instance, the Golden One Center, we still can't go to our constituents and say, this is what the Golden One Center has done for us for us because we don't have that report back yet on what the tax benefits were from the G one C and so forth. When it gets to climate, we really have to track this carefully. And so I would hope that the that the city auditor's office would work with Jennifer Venema to track all of these initiatives closely. As far as um moving forward with the Climate Action Plan and uh, uh, you know, the the proposal, the work plan that Jennifer has brought forward, the things that stand out to me are that transportation is by far the biggest producer of greenhouse gases in in our region, and we have to look at that. Of course, energy use sectors are are second in line, and it's pretty easy for us to pass an ordinance to to make it requisite that all new buildings be electrified and not use natural gas. But, you know, frankly, we really have to work on the transportation sector very hard. The fact that we weren't able to pass Measure A this year was quite a setback to us in achieving climate goals. We're going to have to focus on that in twenty-twenty-two. Uh, Jennifer has raised the specter that maybe we could do a different kind of funding locally. Uh, that's a possibility, but then in the pandemic, we have all these stressors for so many of our constituents and businesses that that would be hard to affect. We're going to have to look at this, but, you know, electrification of vehicles is a huge way to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And um, the city's doing a good job in terms of uh creating charging infrastructure. Uh, but, you know, people will, I think, as time goes on, really embrace electric cars. I know that I have. I know Larry Carr has. Uh, these things really work. They're they're just tremendous, and I I hope that people listening will take this personally and realize that until you change your own personal habits about around mobility, we won't attain our goals. Everybody's got to participate. The city can lead, and we can make policy, but people have to change the way they get around town. You know, to that effect, the Slow Streets uh proposal is certainly one that I would support. Um, you know, that's okay. That's certainly not going to solve our climate problem, but it's a it's a help. And it actually is, I think, as much a response to the pandemic as anything. But the fact is, as we train people to motivate in different modes, we all gain, and it helps us get towards our climate goals. The last thing I want to say is that trees make a huge difference. You know that I was pretty instrumental, and thank you, Jay, for putting me in charge of the the Tree Ordinance Project a few years ago. Uh, you know, our Tree Ordinance has brought in a lot of money for tree mitigation, and one place that we can gain, very substantial gains quickly, is to improve our tree canopy uh and to do it equitably, certainly in underserved neighborhoods. We've got some money now. We need to implement our Urban Forestry Master Plan. It should be coming to us in draft form early next year, but this is a project that I think that we really need to focus on. There are so many places in this city that we can plant trees and gain equity and improve lives and the health outcomes for underserved neighborhoods. It's just a no-brainer. We're the city of trees, but we're only half the city of trees. The haves have a lot of trees, and the have-nots don't have many trees at all, and this is a problem that we need to rectify, and we actually have funding to do it to a to a large extent. So I know that I'll be focusing on that in the year ahead. And um. Okay, the the last thing I want to say, Mayor, is this, that when we look at slow streets, it can't be just the downtown grid. We have to look at other neighborhoods. We have to look at South SAC. We have to look at North Gate. Uh, you know, we have to look at the underserved neighborhoods as well. All right, that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Let's turn it over to Councilmember Carr and then Councilmember Chenier.
Thank you, Mayor. Jennifer, I have a couple of questions, if you're still around.
I am, Councilmember Carr.
It's right there.
Uh, your report says that we have reduced greenhouse gas emissions by uh as a community by nineteen percent and twenty-eight percent. If we implement this plan, how much will we reduce greenhouse gas emissions?
That's a great question, Councilmember. We don't have that answer calculated. So right now, calculations are underway for the city's Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. I know all these plans can get a little confusing, but that's longer term. And so we were being responsive to the need to move quicker. So what we've identified are the key enabling steps towards those long-term reductions that would get us towards our goals for twenty-thirty and twenty-forty-five.
So how much money are you asking us to commit to this effort that we don't know what the result might be?
We are proposing three-point-eight million dollars approximately for the steps that would be supporting those longer-term reductions towards the Climate Action Plan goals.
And this is going to be with an idea of reducing vehicle miles traveled? Is that the deal?
That's correct. It's multifaceted, Councilmember, so it will be figuring out how to develop our program to really make meaningful progress on the transportation side. It's also moving forward ordinances and programs for electrification while looking at some of these other opportunities identified. For example, figuring out how to accelerate jobs efforts as well.
So when I look around, this is just me looking. When I look at the traffic downtown and reducing vehicle miles downtown, uh, I see uh some opportunities. When I look at Highway ninety-nine, Highway fifty, uh, eighty, Business eighty, uh, and I five, with two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand cars a day traveling those corridors, is this the best way to spend uh three-point-eight million dollars to reduce vehicle miles travel?
This is what we are recommending, we believe, that would get forward on some of the key first steps to solve those bigger challenges. That is why the transportation funding item that I highlighted is so important. We're only recommending an initial investment of a hundred thousand so we could get towards a finance strategy that will complement the data coming through the Climate Action Plan process, which C D D is managing, and figuring out new revenue opportunities because this is going to take funding transit, it's going to take creative ways to ensure we have an equitable mobility system, ways for people to work with more flexibility. So that's one of the key steps, and um also just recognizing that many of these items have been prioritized and vetted through the last nearly two years of the mayor's Climate Commission and a lot of city plans and efforts to date.
Are you asking for the council to approve one hundred thousand or three-point-eight million?
Tonight, Councilmember, we're not asking for any funding approval. We are asking for initial feedback on this plan, and then we will be bringing the plan back along with the mid-year budget process when we can make funding recommendations. So we would have funding recommendations at that time, which, again, pending that feedback, if we go all in, that would be a total of three-point-eight million. The transportation piece, there's a few elements in the plan. The hundred thousand is focused on vetting those financial options for new transportation revenue.
Okay, you're not asking for any money tonight. You're just asking for our feedback. My feedback.
Correct.
My feedback is to uh put resources where it can do the most good, and that is, we must identify how many uh vehicle miles traveled we're trying to produce or reduce, how much greenhouse gas emissions we're trying to reduce, and then focus on those areas that give us the greatest bang for the buck. I would submit to you that two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand cars a day down our big highways and some of the commercial corridors might provide more bang for the buck. That's my feedback. That's what you're asking for. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Chenier.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first of all, uh, Jorge, I think, uh, good job on the audit. I think this is gonna require continuous auditing, um, because what you're you're doing is more than just looking at whether people are abiding by the policies passed by this council, but you're looking at changing a culture of how people think about their jobs, and that's a lot harder than just kind of a point-in-time audit. So I think thinking through how this is continuous, um, and even lapping back around to see what's happened uh with the folks that you've talked to and and made recommendations on today. So, you know, this is a critical issue. I think the council is um certainly putting its weight behind this issue as important and important to our future as a city. So just thinking about what that will take over time, I think, would be an important piece.
Thank you.
Uh, I want to go to um the report, and um I'm actually glad that that Larry asked the questions he did because I think that, you know, it's a, well, I I agree with everything in the report, and I would also say, thinking about the justification, you know, CACOG passed its M T P S C S uh program um this year, and a lot of work went into it, a lot of analytics went into it. That's how we get to the nineteen percent reduction in greenhouse gases for the region, and everything that's been proposed uh fits into that report. Um, and and that has been really thoroughly uh analyzed as we've gone forward. So I think that that's a big piece of it. Um, I I think on the funding, on the three-point-nine million, Jennifer, uh, how much of that um will will create a return on investment as far as lower cost for the city or whatever? And is there, and I'm not expecting an answer at this moment, but I I want to know if there's a way that where we know um reductions or or the work that you're doing will result in revenue for the city, um, if we can use that to think about funding sources for that so it can pay for itself. I'm personally a little bit hesitant, and I've said this in a couple of instances, to vote for any new dollars at this point until, one, we know where we are mid-year, um, which I know you're waiting for on this, but also so that we could look at it against a lot of other funding needs that we have in the city, particularly around specific neighborhoods that we've identified. Um, and then also, um, we don't know what's going to happen in the first six months of next year, and so thinking about what a recession might do to us, I think we need to be pretty conservative about dollars at this point. So really looking at the R O I on all of these things, I think, is going to be important when when you come back. Um, on the pilot program, I think I have two issues. So one is a hundred thousand dollars in CARES money. Is that the sole funding for this program at this point or this pilot?
No, Councilmember, that's going to primarily allow us to purchase equipment by the end of the year and to get in initial supplies and staff time to plan, but most of the funding will be in kind at this point provided by Public Works for the pilot phase.
Okay, so there's no additional general fund money at this point?
Correct, not for the four-to-five-month pilot.
Okay, and and I would want a little bit more detail specifically on the four-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars for two F T E. I'm hoping there's other things in there besides those two F T E. Um, the the final thing I would say on the pilot, and and I agree with uh Mr. Harris on this one, you know, the next issue that we're talking about is equity and an equity lens for the city. Um, thinking about where the pilots go, I think we need to expand it or think hard about the equity issues of just doing it in Midtown versus other neighborhoods around the city. So that that requires some thought, I think, some community engagement. I appreciate that the that Midtown has done a plan. I think that's great. I appreciate that Midtown has done a plan. I think that's great. But, I would say that as we think about the issues around equity, we need to think about the origins of the challenge. And I will give you one example of what CACOG is trying to do to remedy that. This year, as far as CACOG projects go, we also put three million dollars into planning efforts in communities that have not been successful, that are at risk and have not been successful in getting CACOG grants. So, increasing that pipeline of information and proposals is important. And I would argue that the same thing really matters in this instance, is we need to think long-term and where we make our investments and in what communities so that we can bring around an equity lens to it is going to be very important. So, with that, Jennifer, I do want to say, this is really good work. I'm not sure if you're still working on our tree nursery or not, but I want to congratulate you on the job. I know you're doing a great job on it and look forward to continuing to work with you on this. Thank you, Mayor.
So, I'll make a couple of final comments here. You know, the opportunity in front of us is how do we, as a city, capture the green agenda? And how do we act as and be seen as a state and national leader by putting climate front and center in all we do? It's not identical to, but it's similar to the racial gender LGBTQ equity lens that we're talking about, that we'll be talking about in a few minutes. So, I want to start, first of all, by complimenting the city manager on something because I think this shows that we've got the right people and we've got the right motivation. When the Climate Commission completed its eighteen-month outstanding work, and we talked to Howard about sending a signal that we were going to be serious about implementing its recommendations, he did not hesitate, and he put Jennifer Venema, who everybody has this incredible respect for, in a position with the title, or at least the interim title, to be able to lead. And that's really, really a good thing. But I do think, and there is a but to that, and it's not about Howard. It is about the culture and the longstanding culture, as Jay put it, of our city when it comes to these kinds of issues. The city has grown up again as the provider of basic services. That's what we do, and I'll say it, if I say it once, I'll say it a hundred times. That's the most important thing that we do because if we don't do that well, then we can't do anything else. But, we do do that well in most instances. And the public and the state and the country and the planet is demanding that we take on the issue of climate. And so, when you look at the audit report and you see that we've got no internal communication strategy, we have inadequate funding for sustainability, and that sustainability is not a priority across city departments. And then, you combine that with Jennifer's set of recommendations with actually a relatively modest number, I mean, in the big picture, three point eight for, three point eight for one million dollars of outstanding unfunded needs. Then, it begs some questions for me. Should we elevate the climate manager, climate czar, whatever it is, even higher in the organization? Should it be seen on par with some of the other things that we identify as lead issues in our city? And then, Jorge Seguera, I'd like to ask you, in your audit, did you actually quantify the overall savings that could be had by changing some of our existing practices, whether it's around streetlights, whether it's the idling of city automobiles with two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars of potential savings, gasoline savings? Did you quantify to any degree how much we could save by, for example, instructing our city management and our city team to go do those things, and then we can take that money and we could actually put it towards the three point eight for one million dollars that we need to build a team around Jennifer and get going on all of these initiatives?
We did try to look into that on some issues, for example, with the street lighting. The complication that we ran into in doing that is that the data isn't as reliable as we would like in order to come up with a estimate that we felt we could come forward with in a report. So, one of the things that we pointed out on the report that we need to do is identify where these gaps in accurate data are so that we can address those data gaps and have more accurate information to base this analysis on, and then be able to come back to the council with accurate figures on how much we think can be saved. I think there's no doubt that there are savings to be had, but to get an accurate figure that our office could stand behind, we needed more accurate data.
How long would it take you to get a more refined number?
Depends on which specific piece you want to target and how big of a data set we're referring to.
Okay, well, Jay Chenier is correct that there are a lot of calls on the general fund, right? And we don't yet know our, you know, our exact fiscal situation, but here's a target for you, Jorge, in terms of looking at it, three point eight for one million dollars. Seriously. And, you know, whether you got there, whether you get there or not's another question. But I would like, as part of this motion, to ask the city auditor to, direct the city auditor to work with the city manager to come as close to the three point eight for one million dollars as you can from internal savings around energy, around the city's usage of energy in various forms, and then, boom, apply that to the gap. Now, the council will still, as Councilman Chenier said earlier, will still want to fly-spec the expenditure plan, and we're going to, you know, the new council will want to go through that, but let's make that, you know, January, February action here where we find that money. I also remember from months ago, the Management Partners Study, which also had a pretty detailed section on the energy savings in the city. And I know that there was a significant number attached to that. That may overlap with, you know, some or all of that, what is in your audit, but I'd like that, whoever the maker of the motion, let's add that, and let's get going. Because rather than talk about it, let's get as close to three point eight for one million dollars as we can and implement. And on safe streets, slow streets, excuse me, I want to thank, again, the advocates out there and the Climate Commission for pushing us here because I know we don't always move so fast, but here we are now before the end of 2020, and we've got the first hundred thousand. We're committing to six miles. We're going to work with the team and the city team and the community, and we're going to stand this up. So, on that, on top of the electrification ordinance, we've got, we've got a really good start here. So, that would be my, who made the motion, by the way? Did anyone make it?
I did, Mayor, and I'm happy to take that as a friendly amendment if my second concurs. I think Jeff was the second. That's what Eric said, but I didn't actually hear him second. Item twenty-two. I moved both twenty-one and twenty-two.
Okay. Jay, would you accept that friendly amendment with your second?
Jeff.
Jeff, sorry.
Yes, indeed, absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, let's call the roll on item twenty-one, and then on item twenty-two, we'll move on to the next item.
On item twenty-one, I had a motion by Councilmember Hanson and a second by Vice Mayor Harris. So, Councilmember Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. Very good. Thank you again for good work, and I guarantee you, we're going to be coming back to this subject many times in 2021. Jorge and Jennifer and your teams, thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Excellent. Now, we move on--
And on item twenty-two, I also had a motion by Councilmember Hanson and a second--
I'm sorry. Yes, let's call the roll on that item, please. Go ahead.
Thank you. For Tim Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember--
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. Okay, now, we're done with that for now, but again, good, good work, everybody. Let's now move to, I would say, an equally compelling set of issues, and that is the Citywide Racial Equity Initiative. Who is taking that? No, Councilmembers Geta and Chenier?
Yes.
They're both taking the lead here. Are you guys going to pick off the presentation?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think our wonderful city staff here is putting together a few quick slides here to get us going. And thank you, Koi, for getting that up there on the screen. Well, first, you know, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to start by, you know, kind of framing the discussion. And I want to thank all my colleagues on the council here for beginning this discussion, not just today, but even well prior to this. Councilmember Chenier and I want to bring this forward to discuss with you the creation of a Citywide Racial Equity Initiative. And this is long overdue, despite all the good intentions we've tried to do in years past. And these efforts should begin with an acknowledgement of our city's actions, our historic actions, and recent systemic harms and racism that's occurred in our city, and move forward with affirming a sustained commitment to a Citywide Racial Equity Initiative. If we truly want a city that serves all our community equitably, then we must take on this transformative work of racial equity. Our city has unfortunately had a long history of systemic racism and harm that's been afflicting a lot of communities of color. And that's what brings us to this discussion here. This type of history goes back to when, the point of when John Augustus Sutter stepped here on the grounds, on the soils in our area with the mistreatment of our Meowak, Maidu, Potwin, and other indigenous communities that were here well before us, well before our incorporation. And even after incorporation, we know that that continued with the Chinese railroad laborers, the interment of Americans of Japanese descent here in our own city, and historic racist housing policies such as redlining of our own communities, which have led to issues we still see today and disparities we still see today that have been detrimental and had a lasting impact on many Black and Brown communities in our city. The demolition of some of our communities in the central city, which were many Japanese and Chinese communities where they were displaced from the downtown area, and even most recently, and I think that's the important thing, is that acknowledging the recent tragedies of our own young men and women of color. That's why, you know, I think it's important, and through this effort, that what Sacramento's history shows is that we've got a lot of work to do, and we need to acknowledge those histories and current tragedies of our past and current. I do want to acknowledge, though, at the beginning, that because of the community and the city staff work, we have made great strides. Here in our city, recently, the city auditor's report showed some of those efforts. We've made great strides recently with our hiring of a diversity manager such as Ami Barnes, and also joining the Government Alliance on Race inequity in 2017. Joining the national effort on this transition and this move of how do we change our city? We launched the City Racial Equity Action Plan that focused on workforce equity with input and assistance of our African-American Employee Leadership Council and the Latino stakeholders and other organizations feeding into this action plan. The development of a Citywide Recruitment Hiring and Selection Manual in this year in September of 2020 to address some of the disparities in workforce representation and the annual audits of our city's workforce diversity that were recently presented at the Budget and Audit Committee. Our internal diversity work inspires us to explore what race equity looks like externally and how we can use race equity lens in our policymaking decision. Councilmember Chenier, myself, the members of our Law and Legislature Committee, Councilmember Hanson, and Councilmember Harris, during the committee, engaged in a conversation with our community stakeholders, with organizations like Race Forward, to look at this issue for our city. We need a city platform on racial equity. We have a legislative platform. We used to fight for resources for our city at the state level and federal level. If we believe this is a priority, then we also need a shared platform on race equity that is driven by community. Let's see, Koi, if we can move on to the next slide here. Now, on this slide, you'll see that we, there are shared definitions of racial equity, inclusion, and that have been brought forth hereby by a partnership of community stakeholders. Now, this work will take time and share, to be able to get shared definitions that are foundational to making this a real success for our city. I think here on our last, my last slide, before I transition to our real experts in our city, is, you know, centering this work specifically around community to operationalize, sustain, and support citywide racial equity. We have to observe and listen to the voices in our community and to those already focused on racial equity. And this is, these were issues that were brought to us during our public hearing and input from the community. We must reach deeper and broader to include non-monolithic voices in developing this initiative. One thing that was very loud and clear during our conversation in our workshop at the Law and Legislation Committee that was brought forth by experts in this field of how to transform cities and how to engage, is that nothing for the community without the community. And so, that, again, brings us to the external work. We've done great internal work here to make efforts and strides and start us on a positive trajectory for racial equity. But, we need to be focused deeper and broader in the community work. And with that, I want to pass this over to Ami Barnes, our City Diversity and Equity Manager, to discuss why we lead specifically with race on this issue.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Wanted to highlight two important foundational components that we learned as part of the learning cohort with GARE in the years of 2018 and 2019. We are members of GARE, which is a national initiative of Race Forward. And as part of this, we have aligned with over two hundred local and municipal governments throughout California and the nation that are working towards embedding racial equity in their systems. So, these two, these two important components, the first one is why we lead with race. And it is important to understand that racial inequities are deep and pervasive, that racial anxiety is on the rise, and as we can see from the national discourse and what has happened over the last year, it is an important concept. It is an important topic, and it is something that we need to deal with as we hear from our communities. It is also, I would add, racism and race is often something that is the elephant in the room, but it is also what we are probably least knowledgeable and able to deal with in a very effective and an embracing and an inclusive way. Learning an institutional and structural approach can be used with other areas of marginalization and being specific matters. So, the highlight of this slide is that while we may be race-focused, it is not exclusive. This approach provides an intersectional analysis with race being the center. I'd like you to think of it like it's not race or gender. It's race and gender and sexual orientation-- and sexual orientation and gender identity and, 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 and. So we center race in this conversation as part of a racial equity approach. The second component is the theory of change, which leads to the next slide. The theory of change, which is also part of Race Forward, GARE's national, um, effective best practice, has three dynamic components. The first one is normalize. The use of a racial equity framework clearly names the history of government in creating and maintaining racial inequities, as Councilmember Garrett highlighted at the beginning of our, um, time together. It also envisions and operationalizes a new role of government and how we interact and support community in advancing racial equity, and it utilizes clear and easily understood definitions of racial equity and equity, which you saw earlier in the presentation. It's foundational and it creates shared understanding. The second piece of normali- normalizing is to communicate and act with urgency. Despite the belief that change is hard and it takes time, which it does, we also have seen repeatedly that when racial equity is urgently felt as a priority with all the dimensions and the breadth of the organization, we can achieve more quickly. Building institutional accountability mechanisms via a clear plan of action will allow accountability. Collectively and with a commitment from the mayor council, we can create a greater sense of urgency and public will to achieve racial equity for our city. The second piece is organize. To build our organizational capacity as local government, it is important that we must be committed to the breadth and depth of institutional transformation. All are necessary to organize ourselves. Sustain commitment of the leadership of elected members and staff, decision makers together for changes to take place on the ground. Infrastructure that creates racial equity, experts, teams and thought leaders throughout the organization. Another piece of organizing is partnering with other institutions and communities. To achieve racial equity, we as local government must work with a network of partners. We must work with institutions, businesses, education, philanthropy, everybody, nonprofit, and everybody to center the work on those communities that are impacted the most. The third piece is operationalize. Implement racial equity tools are not, are, are intended to be deliberate and intentional. Racial inequities are not random. They have been created and they have been sustained over time. Inequities will not disappear on their own. Tools must be used to change the policies, programs and practices that are perpetuating inequities, as well as used in the development of new programs and new policies. To be data-driven is also a powerful way to operationalize. Measurement must be taken at two levels. It's first to measure the success of specific programmatic and policy changes, and second, to develop baseline, set goals and measure progress towards community goals and visions over time. It's something that you continually look at and refine and refine and refine. So by committing to embracing a momentum of learning and growth, being specific and centering and identifying race, and a consistent application of this theory of change, the city council is so uniquely and powerfully situated to examine and transform policies and practices towards building a racial equity city. And so now I'd like to trans, uh, hand it over to Councilmember Shanir, who will discuss the 2021 City Racial Equity Initiative.
Shit, sorry.
I'm sorry. Um, I'm back. I apologize. Councilmember Shanir?
Yeah. So, I don't know. So none of that came through, but Ami, I wanted to thank you for your work and your leadership on this. Um, it's been really important, and also I wanted to thank Koi, uh, and Allison. Koi Sayturn from District Six and Allison Jo from my office for working with you to help bring this here. And, and thank you for the challenge that you just laid out to the city council. Um, you know, this conversation is going on in lots of places. I mean, for me, uh, it's going on at CACOG, it's going on at the Cracker Art Museum, um, it's going on in my own business, and that, and that's really important. Um, I'm excited that it's happening here and now in Sacramento in our city because I truly think we can be a, a leader in the nation in what we do. And if you think back to the Time Magazine article of us being the most diverse, uh, city in the country, then the question is, so what? What are we doing with it? And finally, we're getting around to actually doing something important. Um, and something that I think is, is instrumental to the success of our city over a period of time. One, because it's the right thing to do, but two, also because it, our economic future depends on it. If we don't, uh, if we don't have an equitable situation here, if we don't bring our neighborhoods up, um, financially and economically, uh, we will fail as a city. So this is important, I think, to our, our, our very survival as a city and as, uh, important to our success. So there's a couple of things that I wanted to go through. We can go to the next slide here. Um, so we, we're, we're doing a little bit of looking back and now looking forward. Eric gave us some history and, and framing. Ami talked a little bit about the why part. Um, where do we go from here? And I think there's a couple of things that we need to be thinking about and doing. One is, we want to bring a resolution to the city council in January, uh, again, looking back and looking forward, looking back to acknowledge what's happened and some of the systemic institutional racism that we've had and, and what's happened because of that. Uh, but also gain a commitment, um, to a citywide racial equity initiative. Um, that is something that I hope each council member, and we have a certain number of questions or a list of questions we want people to hopefully address either tonight or as we go forward. Um, but are we ready to make this commitment as a city? I think it's important that we do that. I think it's important as staff is working, uh, in many, many places on these initiatives, um, and you're going to hear from Lynette Hall about some of that. Um, but it has to come from the top as leadership and engage, uh, with our staff and with our community to be successful. Next slide, please. Um, the, these are the things that we're, we're thinking we need to do. Um, one is, and, and you heard some of it, but really agree on a definition of racial equity uh, and create a vision for the work. Again, this is where the council needs to lead. Uh, we need to think about resources, um, both, I think, uh, in Ami Shop. Uh, she is a one-woman show right now, and this is complicated work. It's a lot of work. Um, she has spent, uh, many, many months, over a year, getting to where we are today, but we need to be able to speed up that pace and, and really think about what's important. And again, this is, this has to be a collective and collaborative opportunity for staff in the city. We're trying to change culture. Changing culture is just, is not a point in time thing. It's really how people work, how they view their jobs, and that's going to take a collective effort among, uh, all of our city employees to identify the need to, to make sure that this is a priority as we go forward. Um, we need to think about how we engage the community in a, in an authentic way. I know that there's been some work on that, but we also heard back from the community members that we were working with, that what we were doing wasn't sufficient. Um, this is not something we do great. Uh, we know that, but I think working with the community about how we should do it isn't, as, is as important as the actual doing. So we want to make sure we, we do that. Um, and then developing a, a data-driven racial equity action plan, um, which, again, puts a community voice in the middle, um, and, and has actions that will, will have an ROI for us, um, on this issue. So that, that certainly includes development of metrics to see how we're doing. And again, we think about this in three, in at least three levels. One, how we do our work internally and, and a lot of what Eric talked about, uh, what Jorge's been doing on our equity, um, audits is really important there. Two is how we work with, for example, our vendors and how we, how we think about who we buy from, who we do business with, and how that's reflective of our community. And then three, certainly the community at large and how they see it. So how do we develop metrics for those things? Next slide, please. Um, so that's, that for me is our piece. Um, I think that part of the resolution should be a commitment to developing, uh, that lens that we need to look through as we do everything. And I said in our last piece, when we thought about slow streets, are we thinking about equity? Are we just thinking about, this is a neighborhood that has had the ability to get out in front? We need to balance those efforts. With that, I want to, uh, introduce Lynette Hall, who is another part of the, the support system that we have for Ami and who has been working on this issue. Lynette?
Thank you so much, Councilmember Shanir and Getta, for your leadership on this issue. Um, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, again, to echo the council members', um, statements, we're asking for a, a commitment from council to really provide consistency, capacity and coordination for this important work. Um, not to negate all of the important work that staff, uh, in various departments are already doing. Um, in preparation for tonight, uh, we reached out to all departments to get an idea of what is currently being done, um, to really support equity. Uh, we asked a number of questions around, uh, what are some of the programs and projects that your department is working on where equity is considered? We asked them to describe that policy and program, um, and budget decisions that are made. Um, and then more importantly, what does the program or, uh, project have ability to impact and who will it impact? Um, and then what are some of the desired community results? So how does this help the well-being, health, wealth um, of, of our residents? And what are, are the expected outcomes? Uh, next slide. Um, I think that we were all presently surprised to learn that a lot of work around equity is already being done. Uh, this slide here illustrates a small snapshot of, uh, the work being done in areas around hiring, training, policy development and capital planning. These are just a few examples, not all. I encourage you all to take a look at the supplemental attachments that provide a little bit more information and detail. Um, I just want to highlight a few. Um, our Convention and Cultural Services Department, in collaboration with our Arts Commission, adopted a ration equity, a race and cultural equity statement, uh, that was developed in collaboration with community. They have created some new grant programs that were specifically targeted to equity and focused on small cultural significant organizations. Uh, the department also adopted a equity policy for all panels. So that includes hiring, RFP review, vendor review, vendor review grants and art, artist commissions. They are required to be both diverse by race and gender. Every panel that is put into place to assist the department in any decisions must include three participants and must reflect the diversity in its members. The work that we're asking for today is making that a policy and consistent. The Community Development Department, they have been embedded in equity work in a lot of what they're doing. They are currently working on the general plan, as you have heard, um, specifically around the environmental justice element, which really addresses the historic inequities related to the disadvantaged communities, and a lot of those are low income and of people of color. They're looking at how do we ensure that they are not disproportionately, uh, affected by pollution? There is also an anti-displacement strategy within that department in partnership with our Neighborhood Development Action Team, which I have the pleasure of co-leading with my colleagues in economic development as well as planning. We work on policies to really reduce negative displacement and gentrification, um, impacted by new developments. So how do we invest in neighborhoods without displacing the current residents? Our Department of Public Works, they have been busy working to create a holistic mobility system that enables all residents, including low-income and disadvantaged residents. How do they get to where they need to go in the cleanest way possible with their electric vehicle strategy? And with regards to recruiting and hiring, they're going above and beyond. They're advertising on additional venues to ensure that those classifications where minorities are often underrepresented are represented. For the interview process, they ensure, again, that their panels are diverse and inclusive. They also include a diversity question in every interview. Our Department of Utilities, they have various programs around equity. Some of them are the, uh, Sacramento Utility Rate Assistance Program, which is a program for income-eligible customers, many of whom are residents of color. There's a leak-free program, which provides free plumbing repairs to our, uh, small, single homeowners that are most in need. Um, a program specific to Council District Eight around the gardening conversion program, uh, provides an opportunity to remove chain, chain link fencing, um, install and install a more river-friendly landscape, and all of this is for free. Last but not least, our Human Resource Department, they are spearheading a citywide classification and compensation study to really address the inequities with race and gender. They are also implemented a blind application process just, just, just this year in March. Uh, they continue to work with the city's application system to really track this data. Um, the HR department is partnering with, um, Ami Barnes, who you heard from in the Office of Diversity and Equity, to really develop and facilitate much-needed trainings for employees related to diversity, equity and inclusion. I, myself, had the pleasure of participating, uh, in a racial equity workshop led by Race Forward prior to the pandemic. As an African-American woman, honestly, I didn't have high hopes for an eight-hour discussion on race based on previous experiences, but boy, was I wrong. I learned so much and left feeling like I could easily come back the next day for more. What was so impactful for me was learning the history of why certain minorities are in the situations and the neighborhoods that they're in. We learned it was by design. This was strategically calculated and systemic, something my history class never taught me. I learned that this is just not a black issue, but this is an issue that impacts so many. So when we understand and acknowledge the systemic impact that racism plays and the history, only then can we collectively move forward to understand where we need to be and being specific and intentional about it. It may cause some temporary discomfort to some while eliminating the consistent discomfort and disenfranchisement of so many others. Moving forward with this commitment aligns us with our counterparts that are already doing this work, such as the city of Long Beach. Uh, the city of Long Beach City Council unanimously adopted a framework for reconciliation on racism. Their resolution had four key components, similar to what we have suggested. Acknowledgement, listening, convening, and more importantly, catalyzing to end systemic racism. Another example is the work being done by the city of Tacoma. Their city council committed to addressing these disparities through a comprehensive and a sustained transformation of their institutions, their systems, their policies, practices and their contracts. They further declared that this work would be engaged through all organizations across all sectors, but more importantly, they said it had to be led by the community. It had to be centered around the voices most impacted. Their approach was to create a group of stakeholders to get this done. This is something that we think that we should also do. Establishing a multi-sector core coordinating team that should be facilitated by a neutral party to encourage a shared sense of ownership. We believe that a similar approach for our city would be good and a start. The biggest takeaway tonight is that the council's commitment to racial equity will align with the work that is already being done. It will create consistency for better equity outcomes and more importantly, transparency. Now I will turn it back over to Councilmember Shear, Shanir, to wrap up for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynette, and thank you for all your work on this. Let's go to the next slide and, and there's one or two more. So what we're, what we're looking for here is feedback and, and I know that, um, and appreciate that this is the last council meeting for three of you, and that will have three new people, and I'm hoping that they're watching this as well because we will come back. and I'm hoping that they're watching this as well because we will come back to continue this discussion in January. So, you know, obviously, many of our colleagues are going to want to speak on this. We hope you can answer the first question. That's a binary answer. Should we move forward with the racial equity initiative, yes or no? And we want to make sure that everyone is committed to this. The other, the other four questions, we are going to create various venues to have these discussions with staff, with others. And these are the questions that we need to think about, I think, as we move forward and with the goal of being successful in this. How do we use this lens in our policy and decision-making processes? And to me, how quickly can we do that as we have a budget coming up? Is this the lens that we want to look through as we make budget decisions? How do we involve the community, again, in an authentic way? It's a tough one, but we're looking for all of our council members, colleagues and staff to really weigh in on this as well. You know, what are we prepared to do to address racial equity? And I think that that's an individual decision. What's our decision? What's my commitment to this work? And then what's my commitment as a member of the city council and a member of the city to this work as well? And then what are the next steps for the council? Again, we'll be bringing back or want to bring back a resolution next month and then continue to work from there. I believe there's one more step, slide. So if folks are watching us, these are ways to contact us if you want to be involved as a community member or business, a member of the business community. We think that this is something that is pervasive and again, critical to the success of the city. One, because it's the right thing to do. Two, because our future and our economic and financial future depends on it. So with that, I want to turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor, and hear from our colleagues. I believe we have maybe one caller, if not a few more of the public who wish to speak on this as well.
It's really an outstanding start, and I just want to congratulate you, Councilmembers Shanir and Geta, for your leadership and the staff team, the staff leadership represented on this call here. It really, I mean, you just, you can always tell by the breadth of the thoughtfulness of a presentation. And this was thoughtful and deep, even if it's not nearly the end of the discussion. And so, all of you, including my own staff, I know Kelly Rivas has been very involved at the leadership table here too. I want to thank her. So let's hear from the public first and then the members of the city council. I got one or two points I want to make at the end. Go ahead.
May we have our caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Do I start now?
Yes. Please address the council.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Kyra Blackman, and I'm a board member on the African-American Employee Leadership Council. On behalf of the City of Sacramento's African-American Employee Leadership Council, we thank you, Mayor Steinberg and council members, for your commitment to raising citizen consciousness about systemic racism and racial injustice within the City of Sacramento. By hiring an equity manager, a diversity and equity manager, and participating in the government alliance on race and equity, you've expressed your intent to address this egregious issue. These actions, along with other efforts that AAELC has had, the honor of advocating, and the efforts and members of this council have brought us to this moment. With the recommendations presented tonight, we are ready to move into the next phase, putting our commitment to action. We are encouraged by the initiative to acknowledge the historic and systemic harms that racism continues to have on the quality of all of our lives. This action will affirm the council's commitment to identifying benchmarks to establish a citywide racial equity initiative. We applaud the attention given to promoting a workforce pipeline that encourages diversity and inclusion. Nevertheless, we would be remiss if we did not also raise the need to give equivalent attention to the issues regarding the hiring, promotion and equitable pay for currently employed women and people of color. This was a glaring concern pointed out in the city's most recent Employee Workforce Diversity and Salary Trends Report. Along with adopting the recommendations and expanding them to existing employees, AAELC requests this council to also approve additional staffing in the Diversity and Equity Office to truly make the proposed impact. The African-American Employee Leadership Council remains committed to working with this council and city leadership to support this work and all efforts to correct the wrongs of systematic racism, injustice and promote a workplace that celebrates and exemplifies-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, and that also mirrors the community it serves. Thank you for your time and commitment to this change.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more callers.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll begin, I'm not sure the order, but I'm doing it. Councilmember Jennings.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask if they could put the questions back up on the screen?
Sure, right, so that we can have the discussion with that frame of reference. Very good. All right, Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to first thank Councilmember Geta and Councilmember Shanir on their leadership from the council's standpoint on this matter. And then all of the departments and individuals that were involved in this to bring us to where we are today. You asked the question about, should the city council move forward with a racial equity initiative? And I think my answer is, we would continue to be moving backwards if we didn't move forward with a racial equity initiative. I think it's very important that we lead from the front. There are many organizations, there are many businesses, there are many individuals that are looking to us for the leadership to move forward with a racial equity initiative so they can learn from that and they can follow in our direction. So I, I, without question say, the answer is yes, that we move forward with a racial equity initiative. As far as going forward, and I don't want to go through each question because, you know, from a time standpoint, I think this is the first step. And I think we continue to build on the work that has been done, whether it's from the audit standpoint that we just had with our employees and also from the standpoint of the work that's been done with this committee. But I think what's most important for me is to make sure that we do engage the community in these discussions moving forward. And that's from nonprofit organizations, that's from businesses, that's from everyone on the table that wants to be involved and engaged in this. And that we also join forces with others who are doing this work so that we're not all doing this work by ourselves in our own home, in our own houses, so that we can partner together to do some of this work together. So I am very supportive of the framework that's being presented tonight. And I think we will figure out all the next steps, the timeframe, the dollars involved, anything else that we need to do. But I am without question supportive of moving forward with a racial equity initiative. I'll turn it over to the rest of my colleagues.
Thank you very much, Councilman Jennings. Let me turn it over to Councilmember Alan Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to thank Councilman Shanir and Councilman Gera for their leadership. I think this is an extraordinarily important issue in the city, rises right to the top with homelessness. In fact, it may even eclipse homelessness and some of the other issues, even COVID issues because of race. We see in all the statistics play a very substantial role in determining who gets what and the impacts that all of these issues are having on particular interest groups. I am hopeful, you know, I am hopeful, and I'm looking forward to ultimately results. And so this topic is not a new topic, but it is one that I think now has continued to to show itself at the top of the list. And I think we are in an era where this will not go away unless we deal with it and deal with it to the point where we have results showing up in statistics and in real life. And so I am hopeful that the council and the mayor's leadership will help us make substantial improvement in this area. And I will be paying attention and sending my encouragement and support along the way. So thank you guys very much for your interest and continued diligent advocacy for equity and inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Warren. I've got Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. Jay and Eric, this is an extraordinary piece of work. And you guys have put together, and Lynette, you really put together an extraordinary piece that will set the framework for how we move forward. Should the council move forward with the racial equity initiative? Yes, by all means. And I don't think we need to wait until we get the resolution. We can begin now by looking at everything that comes before the council with a racial equity lens. Looking back on what was done in South Africa, it's very important that the injustices be articulated. And to the extent that they can be articulated by the fields that foster that injustice would be even better. For example, if the real estate community could come forward and explain to the public, not just the minorities who were impacted, but to the public, what happened and what harm that caused? Because that's going to be key in getting programs and policies through. The general public must understand that we are correcting a historical wrong and the impact of which is being felt today. And that if we don't do anything about it, the communities that have been underserved will continue to be underserved infinitum. So when you look around our city and you see areas that are very prosperous and then you see areas that are obviously run down, you ask yourself, why is it like that? Well, because of one decision after another, mainly by government. So we did it. We can fix it. I congratulate you on this piece of work. And I only wish that I could stay around. This would make me stay around on the council to help do this work. But unfortunately, you put it up after I'd already announced my retirement.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. Councilmember Hanson?
Thanks, Mayor. I got to hear this at Longledge, and we had a very, very long and deep conversation. I just want to echo a few of the things that were said. First, Councilmember Shanir and Gera, you've gone really deep here and done tremendous work that will continue to benefit from your leadership, I hope, into the future. Ame and Lynette, you are the right people to help lead this work. And I hope that you continue to be strong truth tellers and help bring people together to do what's hard. I do obviously believe this should move forward. And I just want to take an opportunity to say that I'm very proud to see the work of my Arts Commissioner Maya Wallace featured in your slides. She fought for a very long time as Vice Chair of the former Sacramento Metropolitan Arts Commission with Chair Steve Winlock and others to write the equity statement to ultimately get it adopted at the commission. I brought it forward to the city council to make sure it had the weight of the council behind it. And the reason I bring it up, not only because it was on your slides, and Maya deserves a lot of credit for it, is this year, when we reconstituted the former SMAC as the now Arts, Culture and Creative Economy Commission, we saw this policy make a tremendous difference in the deployment of the COVID CARES Act dollars. And how it was implemented caused organizations, big and small, to adapt and to show how they were going to implement it in their work as recipients of those dollars. And it benefited those particular artists and organizations that represented or were from underrepresented communities. And I think it is a great example of how we can put policy into motion and do good things. So Maya, you deserve a great amount of credit for your leadership on this with Dr. Winlock, the current chair. And I hope that the council continues to move forward in earnest, along with the staff, to see what we can do together to bear fruit, to change those injustices and to make good. So, Mayor, thank you. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else? I'd like to make a couple of comments.
Yeah, Mayor.
We have a-
I just, I'm not sitting, so.
You got Jeff, Jeff and Angelique.
Jeff and Angelique, okay.
Jeff was before me, Mayor. I think-
Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
I'll be real brief here, Mayor. Look, our society needs adjustment, and you know, how do you do that? A good starting place is government and policy. This is a conversation that needs to be had. It's needed to be had for a long time. Thank you, Eric and Jay, for pushing on this. Thanks for including Jocelyn Navarro in the conversation from my office. I'm absolutely in favor of this and, you know, come next year, we'll just focus on this. This is a very valuable conversation that needs to be had. That's it.
All right, Angelique.
Yeah, I can, I'll be very brief to Mayor. Everything that needs to be said has been said. I just want to make sure that anyone listening knows that I too am in support of the effort. I think this is a great start. Really proud of our staff, Ame, good job, and Lynette, always great, good job. And great for Eric and Jay to bring this forward for us to discuss. Jay, I think you're right. It's perfect for one of our sort of day-long forums to sort of sit down and talk through how we do this as an overlay across everything that we do. And I look forward to that conversation. Thanks for bringing it forward, you guys.
Okay, Councilman Geta, I know has a quick comment and then I'll-
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We forgot to ask that, you know, we didn't expect everyone on the council to go detail in these. I know we have a lot on the agenda, but one ask that we did have from the community and staff is that members of the council, including our outgoing members, take the time to sit down with Ame and Lynette and our community partners in answering these questions and really giving their input on how we move forward. I think one thing that I want to thank Lynette for her very powerful words, but and I want to repeat what she said was that we must have the leadership at the council level. She mentioned how other cities have done that. So if the ask for us as a council is that we sit with the staff to give the appropriate time to answer these questions as we move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Profound work. And such historic injustice and discrimination, obviously with the history of our country, but also as we look at our own history, our own history of redlining communities, our own history of exclusion. This is our battle to make sure that in our time that we don't need these kinds of policies because our culture and our practices are so clear that inclusion and equity are an automatic part of what we do. And that's not the case. So interesting tonight because it's important that we do the hard work here to get to the set of policies. But think about tonight's agenda, and Councilmember Shanir raised this kind of offhandedly in the last discussion, but I certainly noted it. How different would the discussion on safe streets, I keep saying that, slow streets have been had we, a year from now, had these sets of policies been in effect? We might be talking about that issue, about where to start, very, very differently. And there are other examples. Look at tonight's agenda. I want to suggest that the part of this that needs to be emphasized and reemphasized over and over and over again is the community engagement. Because remember, this is what the community has been crying for. Yes, council leadership is essential. City staff leadership is essential. Yes, council leadership is essential. City staff leadership is essential. But this is the cry coming from the community, and rightfully so. And so I looked at question number, I think it was question number two, is it? What should we focus on? I would give you my first choice here, not exclusive, but I would focus on the 2021 city budget. Period, end of story. Because if we don't apply the lens and the lenses to how we make our budget decisions, beginning now, then this will be seen, maybe rightfully so, as important, but not nearly as important as we say it is. And there is a great opportunity to engage the community in many ways. But two weeks ago, I believe it was, we heard a very impressive presentation from some leaders of the Measure U Advisory Committee talking about participatory budgeting. Well, participatory budgeting is not the sole answer to addressing racial equity and gender equity. I'd like to see if we can get creative here and try to, at least as a pilot, see if we might merge functionally some of these efforts here. Use participatory budgeting maybe as our community engagement tool to ensure that the 2021 budget, fiscal year 2021 budget, 22 budget.
Twenty-one, twenty-two, Mayor.
Twenty-one, twenty-two budget is that we practice what we intend to be the permanent changes in our city. Whether it's the entire budget, whether it's sections of the budget, how we do this participatory budgeting, because remember, there are a couple pieces of it. Some members of the community are asking for resources to have binding authority, and that's one piece of it. The other piece of it is simply how we engage the community more proactively and effectively in the most important decision we make as a city council. That is, to pass an annual budget. So I'd like to think about that. Councilmembers Geta and Shanir, how we engage the community and maybe use this new tool as one means to try to get off to an even stronger start. Thank you. All right, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, this was a provide direction.
Oh, it was a provide direction. I think, does the team feel like we've done that?
I hope so.
Barnes, Ms. Hall? Okay.
Well, Mayor, may I?
Yes, of course.
One comment. I really want to thank councilmembers Gara and Shanir, Lynette, Allison, Coy, Laney. We've been meeting, and it's so wonderful to see that the work is making sense and fits with the vision that the council has for the city and itself. I do want to say that I do hope that as we embark and continue this conversation with the new council members, I hope that we can engage the council members that are coming off in this work. We need everybody to do this work. That we really, I would ask that you think about what kind of capacity building, what kind of tools do you need for you in your role, in your leadership, to advance this work? Really stress that with the staff about capacity building and knowledge building. This work is lifelong learning constantly. You can never, as Lynette shared her experience going with a Race Forward training, I would love to see the council members go through a day type of retreat or learning of what racial equity means so that you can process it for yourself through your own experiences, through your own lens, and through your own history and where your values and justice and privilege and speaking your truth to power as representatives of your communities. So that is something I just wanted to put out there. As we look at some systems that we could apply this racial equity lens to, it would be great to see where we could take advantage of time for our council as a whole to engage in this work as a collective and to really understand how racial equity is working, what it needs to happen so that you all are supported and have the knowledge and tools that you need in your unique roles as leaders and decision makers in the city.
Thank you. You're the right leader. You both are the right leaders. So thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Again, see you back in 2021 for a lot more. Appreciate it. Now let's move to the next item, 24 on the zoo, but I'm going to see if I might short circuit this for just a moment. With Mayor Protem Ashby, I want to entertain a motion to continue this item for at least 90 days. Councilmember, Vice Councilmember Mayor Protem Ashby and I have been in conversations with the Sacramento Kings over the last, over the last days to look at all of the options for the Natomas site. The site, of course, that adjoins the old arena. And we've had these conversations, not just about the zoo, potential of the zoo, but the entire land use plan. And while the Kings are making no commitment, that we think an additional 90 days to speak with them about all of the possibilities would be a very helpful and useful thing. And I know Jeff Dorsow, who represents the Kings, is on the line, who I would entertain as, I suppose, a witness on the motion, or a public testimony on the motion to continue. I would ask everyone else who signed up to talk about the substance of the item to please, thank you for calling, first of all, but please hold off.
Wait while into their comments than we do, period.
I'm sorry?
I've already assured her she is not on her own.
Sorry, Laney, there's a.
Laney's not muted. Laney, you should.
Sorry, sorry, apologies.
So I would entertain that motion to continue. Again, remember, Ashby and I have been working with the Kings, you know, to try to further conversations about a whole wide range of subjects relating to that land in like another 90 days. Mayor Protem Ashby?
Mayor, did you want, you were about to call on Jeff Dorsow, I think.
Well, yeah, that's fine. Why don't we hear from Jeff Dorsow? Can we pipe Mr. Dorsow in? Okay, Mr. Dorsow?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Jeff Dorsow, Senior Vice President, General Counsel for the Sacramento Kings. I guess first, just thank you for making the time. I'd like to also recognize the council members who are exiting us this year. They've all been great servants, and certainly on behalf of the Kings, we really appreciate kind of everything that they've done, and they've been instrumental during their time. So thank you all for that. With respect to this issue at hand, you know, we saw the feasibility study just recently here when that was released. I think we all recognize the importance of the zoo. I mean, I personally served on the zoo board for a number of years, as well as just the site in general of Sleep Train site. You know, it's been a key area of focus and importance, certainly for Councilmember Ashby, for the Kings, and the community in Natomas. So, you know, really, to that end, we think the importance of the issue merits further consideration and just the ability to review the report. And so I think from our standpoint, we would support the 90 days. It really seems like something that doesn't merit rushing.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have other?
Mayor, so Mayor, can I just really quickly?
Yes, go ahead.
So first of all, just to Jeff Dorsow, their Vice President of the Kings' operations, and to the Kings themselves, you know, appreciate that. And I do think 90 days to work with them and talk to them has merit. And I want to thank my colleagues, especially the outgoing members, because they've been really patient with this topic for a long time. And I know Alan Warren was a zoo board member too, and he has very strong feelings about wanting to make sure we protect the zoo and keep it in Sacramento. Councilmember Hanson has given just as much time to this topic as I have. And I was really hoping that we could do this tonight. But I do think there is merit to having this conversation or continuing this conversation with the Kings as the mayor has suggested. And so I would support that. I would also just like to say to the folks who called in tonight, who are potentially on the line and may be frustrated with having sat through a long time there, I think the 90 days is good for us. Let's give it a little chance here and see what happens.
Okay, thank you. We're working very hard on this issue and the entire set of issues out in your district and around the Kings moving to the Golden One Center, so.
With that, Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion or second-year motion to move this forward.
I don't care. You make the motion. It's fine.
Happy to move it forward 90 days.
Happy to second it, Mayor.
Second, okay. Are there other members? Councilman Hanson wants to say something.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a few things real quick. Thank you, Councilmember Ashby, for your work on this. As we've gotten deeper and deeper into the conversation, it is clear that the site the current zoo is at is way too small for them to maintain their accreditation. But even more so during the COVID pandemic, what we've seen is just that the zoo needs a more sustainable business model. And on this small site, it cannot sustain itself from an operations, not just the accreditation issue, but an operations standpoint, to bring in the revenues to support just animal care and other things. And I think it needs a site somewhere like North of Natomas Regional Park or something equivalent. So I was happy to see the study happen and to come back. I think too, not all of you were here in 2013, but some of you were. Angelique and I worked together on a motion to approve the term sheet for the Kings to move from Natomas to downtown. And a key piece of that motion was that there be a good successor use to the site. We haven't yet seen the former Arco Arena site come forward with a beneficial plan for the community to replace what was there, the activity. And I think that the council, in thinking about this, has to put it in that particular context. I won't be here when that happens, so I count on the rest of you to have that conversation, to honor the pledge we made to Natomas on successor use. And the zoo is only one potential issue for successor use, depending on whether it's at the Arco site or somewhere in Natomas. And then finally, there's a lot of concern in District Four, particularly in Land Park, for what comes after the zoo. And just like I talked about in 2013, the city made a pledge to work with District One and the Kings to come up with a successor use. I think that if we have 90 days here, there should be a little bit more thought put into what successor use looks like on the zoo site. There have been some ideas about a botanical garden, maybe some other things. There are historic buildings at the forefront, mid-century modern buildings that have been landmarked. And it is a critical piece of William Land's gift to the city of a major regional park that is one of the crown jewels in our park system. So I think it's only fair that if we have more time, we continue to do work on that front. But I do trust that Mayor Yu, Councilmember Ashby, and the council that gets sworn in next week will take this very seriously and hopefully do what's best for the zoo, for the community, and ultimately for the city moving forward.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. It's important that you spoke, I think, tonight. Are there members of the public still on the line after?
There are members on the line, but we can let them know that it's been continued for 90 days.
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, because it would be proper to take testimony on the substance. It's just a procedural motion to continue. So if we could let them know, that would be great. Councilmember Carr, Vice Mayor Harris, Councilmember Warren, go ahead.
I have no problem with the continuance for 90 days. However, when this first came to council, several sites were analyzed. And the site that was the most favorite at the time by the staff was the site at Bing Maloney Golf Course. There was ample land, huge property, had access to I-5. And it was owned by the city. And it's right down the street from another city golf course, Burton, uh, Burton Cavanaugh. So I was really disappointed to see the consultant's report when it placed that site in a third-place position. And I was disappointed because of the very reasons that we talked about in the previous discussion. That whenever we have an opportunity to invest in an underserved community, we somehow found a reason not to. We developed some criteria that will eliminate the site. We developed some rationale that will make us feel good. But in the end, we don't invest in underserved communities. We don't put attractions that will lure people from all over the region to that community. Consequently, the infrastructure doesn't get developed. Hotels don't develop. Restaurants don't develop. And we say, well, we did the right thing by the criteria. And I say that criteria is bogus. The criteria that was selected to eliminate Bing Maloney is a bogus criteria. Had they been looking at it through what we just talked about, if they had been considering what we are trying to do as a city, and that is make all of our areas, all of our areas attractive, all of our areas with investment, that they would have had a different result. So while I have no compulsion about extending this for 90 days, I would like to see when we come back, a detailed analysis through the lens of inclusive economic development. What does that look like? And whether or not that is a Bible site for the city? And I would hope the council members, in view of the previous conversations, would support it. Because when they, when you were asked, do you support it, what would you do? What you do is, every single project that comes along, you look at it through that lens. That's what you do. Otherwise, you're just giving it lip service. So Mayor, I will vote to extend it. But I would like to see, when this comes back, I would like to see staff with an analysis of that project through a lens of inclusive economic development, the things that we've been talking about for months and months, and you've been talking about for years. And the council just went on record to a person supporting that concept. So that would be my ask, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. I've got Vice Mayor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, Larry must have read my mind. Larry, I am absolutely in lockstep with you on those thoughts. I also believe that Bing Maloney is a very viable site, both from the environmental standpoint, because it's got wonderful trees that are custom-made for a zoo. But if you put a racial equity lens on this and inclusive economic development lens, that site would score higher. So I feel exactly the same way. I won't go over the same discussion. But I think Larry's absolutely right, you know, that it pays to invest in underserved communities, and especially with a large amenity like this. It could be a real boon to the South area. But, you know, Bing Maloney Golf Course, we own it, and it's a beautiful environment for a zoo. Could also co-locate with soccer fields as well for MLS. So I agree. I'm happy to support waiting 90 days. But I would like staff to look at this again through an inclusive economic development lens. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, world-class city like Sacramento deserves a world-class zoo. And so I'm. And so I'm excited about the opportunity for our city to enhance the zoo experience for all those that enjoy and go to the zoo. I have fond memories as a young person, coming to the zoo, doing field trips and those kind of things. I am very interested in the betterment of Sacramento, all of Sacramento. And I think Councilman Carr's comments are point on. I think Vice Mayor Harris's comments also deserve strong consideration. And although I'm not certain which location is the best location, but I think that when we make major investments and we continue to bypass underserved communities, we really, you know, speaking out of both sides of our mouth. You know, we do not get to the kind of city that we say we want without making major focused investments in these communities. New housing is a catalyst for retail, but also major public improvements. Just like we did with the arena, when we did the arena downtown, we did focused, and it brought billions of other dollars of investment and then millions, literally tens of millions of dollars in new taxes and other opportunities. And so, you know, I'm hopeful that the new council's focus will look at all of their major public investments through the lens that we talked about earlier, about bringing this city up to a level of standard in all of its communities, particularly the underserved communities, which have the furthest to go. But oftentimes, we would get the biggest bang for the buck if we would make the investment. And so, again, it's one of those things where we're focused in what we say. We say the right things, you know, and then putting it into action. And where the rubber meets the road, I think sometimes it's more complicated. And hopefully, you know, we will be more deliberate in our focused investment in the communities that have been left behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ashby.
Thanks, Mayor. So first of all, to my colleagues that are leaving today, that were mostly the ones that spoke. I hear you, and I have been, I think you will agree, a strong ally to Councilmember Carr and Councilmember Warren in Districts Eight and Two. They don't plan on changing that the day after you leave. Whole city is important. A zoo is a citywide amenity. We're not talking about removing it from District Two or Eight, talking about Land Park. And Councilmember Carr, with all due respect, Bing Mahoney is a beautiful golf course. And the site I'm talking about in Natomas, both of them are holes in the ground undeveloped. So we'll, that's a great discussion to have 90 days from now. I welcome it. I welcome an economic and diversity lens. I am, I think that's important. As you all know, next week, for the first time in six years, half a decade, I will no longer be the only woman on this council. I am very accustomed to fighting for equity too. And I think it's very important and something we should not lose sight of. But Councilmember Harris, Hanson, and I represent Natomas, and it is an extremely diverse community, socio-economically and racially. And I think that that will bear out in any type of economic lens, which is all I hear Councilmember Carr asking for. Make sure that when we're investing in parts of the city, that it benefits the whole. Also, there is no ask of city dollars at this point. And I think it's unfair to judge the sites based on our personal opinions without allowing staff to give their presentation tonight, which we, which was the mayor's original goal here, was to try to go ahead and push the conversation forward and not take time away from our goodbyes with you all. And, but I can't just not comment when three of you make the same comments that I think are sort of unfair to Natomas. They're sort of an unfair criticism of Natomas without any background, without actually doing the economic research, which we can do, and then take a look. But the report that's coming forward, was here tonight and will be here 90 days, looks at a very specific set of parameters, like is there enough land? Is there access from the freeway? And you may think that the access is good from Bing Mahoney, but that's why we hire experts. That's why we hired people who are experts on feasibility studies to come in and show us the difference between the sites. I would have been fine with whatever rose to the top. Nobody, nobody played politics with that. I wasn't even involved. So we need to see that report. We owe staff the opportunity to present that report to us. And I'm fine with there being an economic and equity lens on that as well. I think that's great. I still think Natomas will rise to the top. So appreciate that, Mayor. Happy to vote on moving it forward.
Let me just, as the mayor wants to.
Arco Arena, the sites around Arco Arena, the homes around there, the businesses around there, do not look anything like the homes, the sites, and the businesses around Meadowview.
Let me, I think everyone's had their piece. I just want to see if I can kind of bring the council together a little bit on this question. You know, as tense as it may be a little bit, this is exactly the discussion that we should be having together. And it isn't to say that the racial, gender, LGBT equity lens necessarily preordains the outcome, but it is an absolute essential and relevant part of the discussion as the council, whether now or 90 days from now, weighs the ultimate decision to make. And so this is, even if it's a little difficult, this is really healthy and it is good. And Councilmember Ashby is right. We've got to hear ultimately the staff and their recommendation and all that went into that. But this is, I'm glad everybody, everybody, including Councilmember Ashby, spoke up here tonight. I think that's a good thing. Let's call the, do we, do we still have callers, Ms. Caffey? I don't want to cut anybody off unduly here.
As soon as you vote, we will, we will speak with each of them and let them know it's been continued.
Okay, very good. Let's call the roll then.
Thank you, Mayor Protim Ashby.
Yes to the continuance for 90 days.
Thank you. Councilmember Warren.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Geta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr. And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. Okay, we do have the next item 25, which I understand is going to be just a very short, five to 10-minute update on where we are with the Crocker Art Museum, without any requested action. So let's do that, and then we will move to our tributes, our presentations recognizing the outgoing council members. Ms. Jones, welcome. You're on mute. Three most famous words in the English language, 2020.
Mayor, I'm going to lead off and then, you know, then.
Oh, Richard Rich, of course. Go ahead, Richard.
Richard Rich, project manager, city project manager for the Crocker project. This will be extremely brief update for you. You remember last year that staff reported on a potential public-private partnership, where the Crocker Art Museum Association proposed to fund and develop an art-focused community park and gallery in Crocker Park. And the city would fund and build a 500-space parking garage with associated roadway improvements. Council at that point directed staff to investigate our financing options, including up to a $30 million city investment in the garage and surrounding infrastructure. Based on that, staff began investigating bond financing for the city project that would have been supported by garage revenues and enhancements to citywide parking operations under the Parking Modernization Program led by Matt Ironman. Staff in the Crocker also at that time began negotiating a letter of intent, cooperatively linking the city and the Crocker projects. Among its other devastating impacts, the pandemic has caused a reduction in city parking revenues, which in turn has put any possible bond financing on hold until parking revenues can return to their previous levels. At that time, financing the project can be reevaluated. And in the meantime, we continue to discuss with Crocker the letter of intent and developing that. And while I'm sad to say that the project may be on hold, the spirit of this public-private partnership endures. And in that light, I'd like to now turn it over to Lyle Jones, Director and CEO of the Crocker, for a brief update.
Thank you, Richard. As you all know, the Crocker is your museum. The museum is a public-private partnership and is managed by co-trustees. The mayor and council trustee is currently Jay Chenier, works 50% vote with the Crocker Art Museum Association, the nonprofit Board of Directors. And annually, because of that public-private partnership, we come to council to give you an update on our programs and what we've been able to, how we've been able to serve the community in the past year. So we wanted to actually put both of these together in a very quick report. You know, normally, we would give you a rundown of membership and attendance and give you various highlights of programs and exhibitions, but this year, of course, has been unprecedented. But prior to shutdown orders, I believe that 2020 was perhaps the best year in the Crocker's 130-year history. Attendance and membership were high. Our exhibition and programs were being very well-received and reviewed. But in March, when we closed, we quickly pivoted to serving people virtually. But knowing that our community has a digital divide, and we also looked at how we could serve people that were both physically isolated and technologically isolated. And from that desire, we created a suite of programs called Color Me Hopeful. The first was a coloring book. We commissioned 15 diverse artists from the community to each create an original work of art for the book that was distributed free of charge at 18 different community centers. The next product, a few months later, was an activity book for adults and children, again distributed free of charge through community centers and libraries. And we've just finished our third product in the suite, an activity kit that is designed to help fill art education gaps felt by area students. Thousands of these kits have been, will be distributed, again at no charge, through a partnership with communities of Meadowview and Valley High and South Stack. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Councilmember Carr for his great support of our block-by-block programs over the years. And Color Me Hopeful is a block-by-block program. In addition to the Color Me Hopeful offerings, museum also provides regular digital content via Zoom and other methods for people of all ages and abilities. We currently have served over 4,000 people through our studio art program, and we've maintained our popular We Wednesday and other gallery-based programs. We're just doing them without the gallery. And we also have maintained our mindfulness and other art, RX projects that have been done with UC Davis Med Center cooperation. On October 10th, we celebrated our 10th anniversary of the opening of the Teal Family Pavilion. That expansion opened with a Wayne Tebow exhibition in 2010. So this year, Wayne Tebow's 100th birthday, we decided to reprise an exhibition of Wayne's work. We had planned on doing a large groundbreaking ceremony for Crocker Park and parking garage on October 10th. Of course, that wasn't possible. We were, however, able to reopen the museum briefly on October 16th. And between October 16th and November 12th, when we were again closed, over 10,000 people came to see that Wayne Tebow exhibition at the museum. Wayne is arguably one of California's favorite artists, and he lives here in Sacramento. And I just wanted to thank you all for your proclamation recognizing his contributions to the arts locally, nationally, and internationally, and also for presenting him with a key to the city. Many people have asked, will we be able to keep the Wayne Tebow show after we can reopen again? And unfortunately, we will not be able to. That exhibition will travel to four of the museums around the United States and is scheduled to close at the Crocker on January 3rd. We are, however, working to see if we might be able to bring it back in 2022, and then it will be 102 works by Wayne Tebow for his 102nd birthday. You know, part of, as I said, the celebration of that 10th anniversary was a projected ceremonial groundbreaking on this project. Now, all of you know, I believe, that we've raised over $40 million from private individuals to help make Crocker Park more usable, also to solve parking challenges, to solve collection-storage challenges, and to help build the museum's endowment so the museum will be more sustainable in the future. These are individual contributions to the desire to invest in a city asset. And we don't want to lose that momentum for the project. But because of the COVID-19 shutdowns and the 80% to 90% drop in parking revenues, we know the parking garage cannot move forward at this time. But we do know that parking demand will return in the future. The downtown area has had historic parking challenges. The museum has certainly had parking challenges. We also know that right now, more than ever, good, usable outdoor space is extremely valuable for community programming. And we want to be able to move forward and make Crocker Park a really usable community asset in the future. So we'd like to make sure that there's still support for this project when they can move forward, but also not couple them so that one can't move forward without the other. Right now, the way the agreements have been written, they're absolutely in lockstep. We'd like to be able to move them independently as opportunity and need arises into the future. Sorry, just one very quickly. I'd be remiss if I didn't just take one second to thank you all for your support of Sacramento's arts and creative economy through CARES funding. It's been a godsend for all sorts of institutions, truly the difference between their survival and their demise. And of course, I want to thank the three outgoing council members for their tremendous service to the city.
Thank you so much, Lyle. Thank you for persevering, you and your team and the board through 2020 and very difficult times. We know how hard it's been and what an important part of Sacramento the Crocker Art Museum is. Councilmember Chenier.
Thank you, Mayor. I had asked Lyle and Rich to see if we could come and do a quick update. And I appreciate how much information we just got in a very short period of time. We can all learn something from that. You know, I think this is important, and we always want to remind people that the Crocker is owned by the city and is a city facility. And what they have done, really, with their size in comparison to other museums around the country is pretty phenomenal. The number of guests, you know, what they've been able to achieve. And I think, as important as anything else, their ability to be out in the community through block-by-block and other programs that they've had, that have really brought arts to to at-risk communities and sometimes communities that have been disenfranchised from the arts. So I want to note that because I think it's important as we think about the Crocker and we think about the future. Clearly, it is not the time to build a parking lot. I think, I'm not sure, Richard, Rich, what term you used, but I think Matt Ironman would have been very happy with that. I think decimated parking revenues is probably the better term and the more realistic one. But I'm hoping we can do two things tonight, Mayor. One is provide direction to the city manager to continue working with the Crocker so that if and when the opportunity arises to do something on a bigger scale with a parking lot, we're ready to go. So that's number one. And number two, to provide some direction to kind of renegotiate the letters of intent and some of the agreements we have so that if the CAMF, the Board of the Crocker, wants to move forward on the park at their own expense, they have the funds to do this, that they are able to do that, and that the city gives the okay under, with, with, I think, the caveat that they would do it in such a way that if a parking lot could be built, it will have space to do that. I think that serves everyone's purposes. So I don't see why we wouldn't do that. I think for the folks that have pledged the $40 million or $42 million, we owe it to them to get something done, and if that's a possibility, I would love to see that happen. You know, in talking to Mr. Hanson the other day, and I think he could bring this up well too, is the parking lot could serve a lot of functions besides the Crocker. The Crocker was interested in 300 spaces, but if you think. But if you think of Lot X and the surrounding areas, including the arena, there certainly is a need. And so we want to continue to be able to explore that. So my hope tonight, Mayor, is that we can provide direction on those two items. One, that the city manager can have staff continue to work with the Crocker so that if and when the opportunity arises and finances change, we can continue to move forward and to allow the Crocker to move forward on its own in the, with the park if that is doable.
Yes, this is a receiving file item, but I think the direction is appropriate, and I back you up totally on that. Let's go forward with what we can and with the support of a very generous community. Absolutely. And then leave open the options and the possibilities for the other pieces. Very good. We've got Councilmember Hanson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. One, Lyle and Richard, thank you for keeping this project moving forward. This has been a long-term idea germinating at the Crocker since I think even before the new wing was conceived. It's part of a larger campus. And I first arrived in Sacramento in 2002 and happened to live right across the street from the Crocker at 1431 Third Street, and looked out every day and thought that park could be so much more, the Sculpture Garden, or you name it. When we did our Capitol Mall study, the students from UC Davis gave us some concepts even for Lot X and for Crocker Park. But I think it's important, too, just to remember, and Eric Guerra mentioned this, but there was a time before the freeway and the gentrification that happened when redevelopment wiped out not only the Japanese, Chinese, and African-American communities in the central city along the Capitol Mall corridor, but where Crocker Park, as of the 1950s, had buildings on it. 60s had buildings on it. And while we call it Crocker Park, it is really a piece of the overall trust. It works in reverse, too, that it looks as if we're holding the Crocker back if we don't do our part. And I think we want it to read both ways. That if the city's going to build the garage, that means the Crocker's going to go forward. But if we don't build the garage, the Crocker can still go forward because ultimately, the trust owns the land. And I think we would never stop. And hopefully, the city manager and the mayor and the rest of the council would agree. But if the Crocker wants to raise 30, $40 million and invest it into that park, God bless you, go forth, make art, make joy, create great spaces. But it is a very underutilized parcel. There are no sidewalks, you know. It had trees planted as placeholders a long time ago, but it's not reached its best use. And so I think there's an enormous opportunity here to further the work of the Crocker Art Museum in the community. And I do love, Lyle, how you took our charge when we renegotiated your debt and did everything else to go out to the communities. And Block by Block is only one example, along with the Art Arc and everything else, in bringing the Crocker to every corner of the city and also bringing every corner of the city to the Crocker. I've been at many events where the Crocker's done particular outreach across every council district to bring people in who otherwise never would have thought to make a day out of it. And it's beautiful to see people of all walks of life, every part of the city, coming together in this communal space, as Jay pointed out, owned by the city, in trust, to celebrate our cultural assets and also to shine a light on what we need to do. So the last thing, when the museums reopened, I went to the Crocker to help promote the exhibits. And while Wayne Tebow got the top billing, right outside of the Tebow exhibit is this wonderful ceramicist, a local man, African-American, who does tremendous work. And forgive me if I cannot think of his name right off the top of my head, but Lyle can tell you who it is. One more time, please.
Akansanya Cambone.
And he grew up, if I'm not wrong, in either Oak Park or Del Paso Heights, but a part of the city that we were talking about earlier. And he is there on...
He grew up in Oak Park, and he went to the old Lincoln School, which is now Calpers, catty corner from the Crocker.
There you go. And so as much as we talk about moving cultural amenities, and I'm not prepared for a motion to move the Crocker to another part of the city at this very moment, but I do think that these cultural amenities give us a place to put those people on stage who haven't always had a chance to be on stage. And, Lyle, I just, I want to enthusiastically support the next steps. Jay, you've been a great trustee, and I hope that the park moves forward and continues to put everybody on stage who deserves an opportunity to be seen and heard.
Very good. Thank you. Is there anybody else? Is there public testimony from, oh, again, Councilmember Carr?
Thank you, Mayor. Lyle, I just want to, you thanked me for supporting Block to Block, but it should be me thanking you. The Crocker has been such a positive influence in the district, participating in so many events, so many fairs. It's been amazing. And I thank you for the tremendous outreach of the Crocker and for you for bringing that type of exhibits, entertainment, cooperation to the district. Thank you very much, Lyle.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. Is there any public testimony?
There are no callers on this item.
Mayor, you have Alan and Eric also.
I'm sorry?
Alan and Eric.
Alan and Eric. Go ahead, Alan.
Very good. Thank you very much. I, too, just want to thank Lyle and Crocker. I know the Block by Block event that they put on in District 2 was one of the... I think it might have been the first in the city. And it was, it was very successful. And I think, you know, art and how it enhances culture, and it gives kids something to aspire to, it promotes creativity, dreaming, it allows talent to flourish. And I think that our art museum is in very good hands, Lyle. Thank you for what you do there, and thank you for the interest in District 2 and the events that you guys have hosted there. So thank you very much.
Okay, Councilmember Geta?
Yeah, thank you again. Lyle also wanted to thank you and your staff, too. I mean, your staff did amazing work both on the first Block by Block on Stockton and 21st Avenue at Colonial Heights Library. And then, then, you know, bringing it back for Part Two over on Stockton and Fruit Ridge. And I, and I got to say, then the community never said, they've never seen so much energy and excitement reviving that section of Stockton Boulevard in such a long time. Even though it was 102 that day, people were still excited to be engaged in the art and in the community and working with community talent to make sure that we bring that, to highlight that together, too. So I also wanted to, again, you know, Councilmember Hanson brought this up, and I know you and I have had a conversation about making sure that we acknowledge the displacement that happened there in that, at Crocker Park, which is not the first displacement, too. I mean, I think it's important that we do land acknowledgement in that area as well, but then also recognizing that there were a collection of both Chinese and Japanese families that were displaced in, later on, in the city's history. So thank you again. Great work, and thanks for doing that, a great effort to get out into the community.
Thank you all very much. Thank you so much, Lyle. And I think the direction is clear, and we'll work with you and your board in every and any way we can, okay? Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So that is the end of the discussion calendar. And now we'll go back to the bittersweet part of the evening. And that is our thank yous and tributes to our outgoing council members. I figure there's going to be 24 separate speeches here tonight. We think three people times eight, and that's appropriate, and that is great. I think I'm going to ask, though, if it's okay that members, except for the departing members, limit their comments to two minutes apiece so that we can, can, you know, do this in a, in a way that makes sure that whoever goes third, which would probably be Councilmember Carr, if we're going in order of, in order of district, that everybody's energetic in a way, because all the members deserve it. And I just, I'm going to, I'll save my comment for the three. But I just want to say, public service is the greatest, is the greatest thing that anyone can experience. It's also one of the very hardest. And so no matter agreements, disagreements, the fights that we have, and you are all to be commended and respected for the fact that you chose to put your names on a ballot more than one time and that you served when you could have been doing so many other things with your lives. And never forget the privilege, but also the gratitude that the community and your community specifically have for what you did to improve their lives. And so let's start with Councilmember Warren. We'll go in order here. And Alan, I don't know if you want to speak first or if you want to wait until you hear from your colleagues. What would you prefer?
Well, this is a newbie for me, so maybe I should speak first and just kind of break the ice and just share some of my, some of my thoughts. And so, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. And I have to say, this has been a tremendous privilege and an honor for me to represent the city of Sacramento. And District 2 is one of the eight standing or sitting council people in the fabulous city of Sacramento. It also allowed me to serve with two outstanding leaders in Mayor Kevin Johnson and now Mayor Dale Steinberg, who I've learned a lot from all that I've served with. You know, some more about politics, some more about life. And I really had no aspirations to be an elected official. I was and have tried to be a giver all my life. And in some way, I think it allowed me to transition into this council position. But I grew up playing sports. And I've had broken legs, I've had separated shoulders, I've had reconstructive ankle surgeries, and I played football, baseball, basketball. And, and, you know, and played in some pretty tough places. But I will say that politics, by far, is the toughest venue of any, if you want to consider it a sport or if you want to consider it some other endeavor. It is much more difficult. And I think the mayor hit it on the head when he said, when you put your name on the ballot, you subject yourself to all the things that politics will bring about. It is one of the most extraordinary things that I have ever done. And I am truly thankful for having had the opportunity to serve with extraordinary men and women. And, and yes, there were times when we did not either agree or we felt like maybe things were not the way we wanted. But the reality is, is that all of us, I believe, that we had good intentions, well-meaning, and really just came about whatever conclusions we came to from our own life's perspectives and what politics has really seasoned us to be. I am a bit different now than I was when I came into office. I have had an opportunity to, to listen, to learn, and to try to put the practice of my life experiences into delivering for the people that I represented. And so we had some successes, and yet there's still so much more that can be done. I truly have to thank Howard Chan, Susanna, Mindy, all of our public safety representatives and people, our planning department, Public Works. All of them have to, I think, work in unison in order to make not only the city go, but to help us deliver for our communities. But I think the person that I have to thank the most for all of this is my wife for enduring nine years of public service, eight years elected and one year running, and my kids and my family, other family members and friends, and the entire District 2 community. It has been a very interesting journey, one that I would truly cherish. I have a lot of wonderful memories to take with me. I want to thank also, in addition to the sitting council members, I want to thank Larry for, and Larry and Steve and I will be departing at the same time. But Larry, for, you know, over 20-plus years of friendship and leadership and wishing you extraordinary joy in your retirement. And then also Steve, who I know we met back during the campaign when we were both running, but also a very, very talented man who has advocated for the things that you believe in and has done it admirably. And, you know, there, again, there are times when, you know, one person is going in one direction and the other is going in the other direction. But you were effective. You were a very effective public official. And so I wish you much success in your journey as well. And, and just to all of my, the sitting colleagues who will remain on the council and the new council members coming in, I wish you nothing but success for yourselves, but also in the leadership capacity for our city. I am very hopeful for the future. And I want to just thank you all for enduring me for the periods of time that you had to be subjected to Alan, Wayne, Warren. So thank you very much. And I am looking forward to now looking at and watching all of you from afar, but wishing you much success. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alan, thank you so much. So I think that the way we'll do this, we got a nice video for you, Alan. And then I think we'll have Councilmember Hanson speak, go his video, have Councilmember Carr speak, go his video. And then we'll go around the horn, and the members can take six minutes, to talk about, talk about all three of our colleagues, whatever you really want, okay? So let's, let's watch the, let's watch the video. Can't hear it. Let's start again.
Hello, Mr. Alan Wayne Warren. We have appreciated everything that you have as council member, councilmaid, and councilmember of the District 2 community. Also appreciate that you and your beautiful wife, Miss Tina, have died for a neighborhood of Del Paso Heights and all other areas in the District 2 community.
My name is Adrian Perez, and I am Alan. I've been a city council member for so many years, eight years. You know what, we've become great friends. We have worked together on many projects. And you've been an inspiration not only to me, but to my wife and our kids. Thank you so much for your eight years.
Alan, I just want to say, we love you. First of all, we love you. Thank you very much. I've done over eight years that you were in office there. We are proud of you. I'm proud of you, especially because you're coming from Class A to T, which is our class. It's never been done before, and I'm so proud of you and all the work that you've done for our community.
Hello, Councilmember Warren. I'm here with Ben and Leo. We just wanted to thank you for everything you've done for District 2. We thank you for allowing minority business owners and ourselves to grow and thrive in the district. We're thankful for everything you've done. We know that We know that you'll continue your good work for every day. Thank you so much, Congress.
Alan, I also am just grateful for the storm that came to District Two and settled the whole rain and the falling, everything settled. And I wanted to just say that you never, part of it you take in, you leave your part of it behind. And that's what you did for our community place than what it was when you came in. Thank you, Mr. Lightburn, and I wish you well.
How charming Alan Warren is, is also my husband. And also somebody I've known for so much.
I watched you every day, coming home exhausted, but filled with passion and determination to pursue you. That we love so dearly. And, but we know now that God has another plan for you and another capacity to continue the work that you've done. And I just want to say thank you.
Wow, very nice.
That is great. I want to thank the city clerk, by the way, and everyone who worked on that project. And also the nice commemorations, the road signs and all Department of Public Works as well. Hope you have those as keepsakes for a lot of years of service. Let me now turn it over to Councilmember Steve Hanson for some remarks, please. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm joined here by my partner, Michael, and our little guy who's up way past his bedtime here, Henry. Nobody ever runs for office unless they really want to make a difference because the slings and arrows that have been mentioned come with a huge price for our families, for sometimes for our staff. And I just think that it's an incredible opportunity to serve. When I first ran, there were so many wonderful people around me and I'm proud to see so many of them still around me. Some of you included were there from the very beginning. You, Mayor, Councilmember Ashby, Jay, you were there when I decided I wanted to jump in and you supported me with open arms and open hearts. And certainly I've taken advantage of your mentorship and friendship. And that's true for each and every one of you on the council as we've gone through this experience. For me, though, as a kid who was born with very little, my parents had a very difficult life. My dad was a paper worker, didn't go to college. My mom, in-home healthcare worker and then a nurse's aide in a nursing home. I had to make my way in the world against great odds, much like some of you actually. And so the opportunity to join you at the dais eight years ago has been and will be the honor of a life. My dad, I'm sorry to be a dog. My dad died in 2004. He didn't get to see me be sworn in. And when I took the oath, that day I talked about him, talked about my family and what it means to make a difference in a city that has given me so much. And so Alan's got a much better poker face than I do. We'll see about Larry. But I do love this city. I love what we've done together. And whether today or next week, regardless of title, I intend to be involved, committed, and to give back because every day really is our chance to make the city a little bit better. And whether it's herbs and domita or any of the many mottos that we have, we're a city who loves the slogan. I think that this has truly been an opportunity that I will always remember and I just have enjoyed it. I want to thank my personal staff, Matt Reed, our Chief of Staff, Isabella Argueta, our District Rep, Kelly McAllister, our Executive Assistant, and all the people who worked in the office before them. I'm blessed to have some of the most amazing staff in City Hall. I know we are, as a city, blessed to have terrific staff, Howard, Susanna, Mindy, and all of our senior leadership, all the way down to the people who mow the parks and tend to the streets. We are really a community full of people who love the city that they work in and want to do the best for it. My commissioners, I want to thank them. My Planning Commissioner, Todd Kaufman, who's been with us for eight years. Our Parks Commissioner, Julie Murphy, who's long been a neighborhood leader in the Marshall School New Era Park neighborhood. Maya Wallace, who was mentioned earlier, who's my Commissioner on the Arts Commission, Dana Kivell on Measure U, Jennifer Berdugo on the Active Transportation Commission, and all the other people who've served. Let it be said that we never wasted a day. We always made the most of our opportunities and then we confronted the many challenges which we've certainly had to face together post-recession, the economic upswing, but also with this last few years of really trying to surmount the challenges of homelessness, law enforcement reform, and racial justice. This is a city that's not shy. It's always faced its challenges with open hearts and minds. And I'm just really privileged to be part of this group. So thank you. I know there's a video and more to say. I'll just, I'll give my quick tributes to Alan and Larry. Alan, I still remember, we sat down and had a beer before we were both elected and talked about the LGBT community. And I've always appreciated your lockstep support for our efforts to advance equality. As the first openly LGBT person on the council, you won't have one after me, but I'll always remember when I asked you to do hard things, things that you didn't always understand or know quite what it meant, each and every one of you said yes because you knew it mattered to some kid or someone out there who needed to know that they could do what they wanted, they could be what they wanted, and that this city was a place where they can make their dreams come true. So Alan, you did a great job on the arena. You've done a great job helping to advance important projects in District Two. But you've been a stalwart ally of moving the city forward on things big and small, not just in District Two, but District Four and all across the city. And I've appreciated that partnership, even when it hasn't always been, like you said, where I went the same way as you or you went the same way as me. We always come back together and we always find a way to make it better. Larry, you know, Bonnie Pennell was a legend. You stepped up and I think you've done an admirable job filling her shoes and living up to the legacy that Sam and Bonnie had left in District Eight. You certainly haven't been shy. And I appreciate the fact that you're always willing to speak your mind, even though it's not always consistent with where everybody else might be. You have a lot of integrity. You have a lot of vision. And you've certainly given this job your all. And I know that your wife is there behind you. I hope that she doesn't mind that we're returning you back to the wild. And I hope that she's able to keep you busy because I know I'm certainly going to stay busy here with my family. So Larry, thank you for your work here and on the smudboard.
Thank you, Steve. Let us watch the video. Start again.
Hi, everyone. Kimmy O'Bast here. No full disclosure, Steve and I are good personal friends. So I may be a bit biased. But you know, when I think about Councilmember Hanson, his legacy, I think about his contributions to Central City, Sacramento as a whole, during a lot of the good times. And I think of his contributions to the arts, to education, housing, economic development, to social justice and equality. And those things, those things last. But of course, I'm also going to remember, always remember, his leadership and unwavering support of the small business community during these darkest of times throughout this pandemic. You know, the Al Fresco dining setup you see behind me is just one example of his willingness to innovate and adapt in order to help businesses like mine survive. So Steve, thank you for the past eight years. And, you know, I'm really excited for you to be able to spend more time with Michael and Henry. And excited to see what comes next for you. And I wish for you nothing more than what the Japanese often refer to as a open future, which really just means one is full of unlimited possibility and hope. Stay safe and healthy and I will see you soon, my friend.
Hi, I'm Julie Murphy. I'm Steve's appointee to the Sacramento Parks and Community Enrichment Commission. And I just want to thank Steve for issuing the challenge when you first started in office that we, everyone has a chance to make the city better every day. And I've seen that ethos applied to a myriad of projects with the parks. Two of my favorites, of course, are the inspirational Ali Yussef Square and also just the enjoyment that people get from the Truett Park Park. So thank you, Steve, for issuing the challenge. We will continue to make Sacramento a better place every day.
I am Marie Boucher. I'm 92 years old. Eight years ago, the doorbell rang and I ran to the door to answer it and there stood a handsome young man. He said, I am Steve Hanson. I am running for councilman, District Number Four. I said, welcome, come in. He sat in the rocky chair, presented his platform, rocked a little bit more. And when he left, my husband and I said, we're voting for you. He didn't make any bad decisions as far as we could tell. I would watch the council meeting on Tuesday just to hear Steve speak. He's so smart and so good. I felt like a proud mom as I was listening to him. He accomplished much. I'm so proud of you, Steve, that you've accomplished so much for the city of Sacramento, the city councilman, and the fourth district. I love you, Steve. I will always love you. I wish you nothing but the best. You are part of our extended family, health, happiness, and whatever endeavor you pursue. Much love, Mama Marie.
Thank you. Really, really, really great. And now we move to District Eight and Councilmember Larry Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. And now the end is near. It's been a while. It's been a wild ride for six years. And I have a lot of people to thank for this last six years. My wife Patty behind me here, who, we got married the day after I got sworn in. And of course, I have a wonderful staff with Matthew Bryant, who's served on the fifth floor for 20 years. Jaime Cervantes and Joel Tony, the rest of our staff. And of course, my bang was with me for several years before she moved on to become the director of the Institute Foundation. So, you know, this is the end of a career for me. I started out in the Army, served 23 years, taught five years at SacI after I retired, served 12 years on the Florida New York Partnership, 16 years on the smudboard, and six years on the city council. It's really time for me to move on and let some young people take the helm. I've always tried to stand up for what I think is right to, even if no one else was going along with me. I've tried to do the right thing, tried to make District Eight a better place and tried to make this city a better place. And I'm thankful for what we've been able to accomplish. I'm thankful for my colleagues there on the council. I'm thankful for the staff. I've worked with a lot of staffs, both in the military and in the private sector. And the city staff is just as good, if not better, than any staff I've ever worked with. And they are just a group of professional people who are really trying to do the right thing and trying to answer to all of us at one time, which is an issue for them at some points. The outgoing council members, Alan Warren. I tell you all you need to know about Alan Warren in one single little phrase. I went to Alan when I was running for the smudboard more than 20 years ago. And I asked Alan for support and at that time, Alan had no idea who I was. And he was a big-time developer. And he took out his checkbook and wrote me a check. And as he handed it to me, he said, but there's one thing I want from you. And I said, oh, here it comes. And Alan said, I just want you to work as hard as you can to get elected. And I said, you got that. And that's all he's ever asked of me. Of all the things that I've done, all the support that I've ever had, he's always said, just do the best you can. And I've always appreciated that, Alan. And I've appreciated working with Steve. You know, Steve's job amongst all of us is really the most difficult because he is the councilmember for the central city, except yours, Mr. Mayor. He's the councilmember for the central city. And when I got on the council, I was amazed at the number of projects and programs and issues that Steve had to deal with. It blew my mind. He said, well, some of these things I've been working on a long time because it appeared like they were coming before the council every week. And he had intricate knowledge of each aspect of these programs that were coming forward. Steve has a tremendous capacity for learning, tremendous capacity to assimilate information and in spite of the slings and arrows, in spite of people coming to his house demonstrating and throwing things at him. So Steve, I really appreciated working with you and I appreciated working with the members of the council as well. I think debate is healthy. I think it's good when we disagree because we represent constituents who have an opinion of one of us if we have disagreements. So there's always a group out there who will agree with us or who would disagree with us. So when we debate and we have disagreements with each other, I think that's a sign of a healthy democracy. And I think it's a sign of independent mind as well. So I want to thank you. I will be riding off into the sunset, literally going west to Napa. But I invite each and every one of you to come visit us. We can go wine tasting. We have ample room if you want to spend a night with you and your loved ones and your kids, a limited number of kids. We only have two extra bedrooms. So we would enjoy seeing you. I plan to keep in contact with the council, keep in contact with you. And don't be surprised if you might hear from me again. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you, people of District Eight, who've been supporting me for 25 years on various boards, commissions, and jobs. We did the best we could do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry. That was beautiful. Let's watch the, let's watch the video. Good evening, councilmen. I wanted to take a minute to thank you for all that you have done for our community and all that you have done for me personally. You have always been there for me. When I picked up the phone, you always answered. You were always there to be supportive and I can't thank you enough. I remember one of our first conversations when I came to this position. I received a phone call from someone at the city saying that the money for summer night lights was in danger. I thought to myself, here I am. My first accomplishment at the macro partnership is to not have summer night lights. I picked up the phone, I called you, we talked back and forth. I told you I was losing sleep over this. And you said, Bill, get a good night's sleep. The money will be there, I promise. And I never forgot that. And you not only said that to me, you sent me a text. I can't thank you enough. It was so meaningful to me to have you throughout my tenure here as a partner and as a friend. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Carr, congratulations, sir. It's about that retirement time. I mean, if anyone is deserving, it's definitely you. You've been working so hard to take care of our district. and really to kind of do what you can to make a positive impact in our community. I would say that it definitely marked. I think they can really, you know, we can say that you can tell a lot about a person's character from what they choose to support and what they choose to speak up against. So I would just like to thank you for continuing to be that inspiration, to be that guiding light and to be the model leader that we need in District Eight and that we have needed in our community. So thank you for all that you've done. Thank you for the inspiration and thank you for being a part of positively impacting our community. Until next time, councilmember.
You've been real adamant, bringing a message about District Eight being the second or third lowest in the crown league within the district. A lot of individuals do not really believe that, but it's just their own, their perception of what they heard. And so thanks for getting the word out that District Eight is also a place to live and also have a lot of diversity.
And speaking of diversity, I wore my shirt for the Latino Festival. And I just got to tell you, if it wasn't for you and your team, we wouldn't be here. This is our fifth year. And you know, and next year, we're hoping that we have a very successful one. And we just really, really appreciate that you really believe in the diversity of our community. And you supported us so much. And the Latino community really thanks you so much, and we will truly miss you.
Thank you. I also want to thank Carlos Eliason for his hard work in putting together those wonderful tributes and those wonderful videos. And now I want to give the opportunity for my colleagues to weigh in here because we spend a lot of time together. And we are a family, even if sometimes a family that, you know, argues with one another, which I guess is sometimes the definition, part of the definition of family. And I think I'm going to start, if that's okay. And then I'll, then I'll go through the line here. I've known Alan Warren for a lot of years, too. I remember when I was coming up and he was so active and successful in the development and the business world. And to me, Alan, when I think of you, I think of a Renaissance man. I think about a man with so many different interests and skill sets and friendships that are really, really deep. And I want to tell you that no matter what our disagreements, and we've had some, that just a few, I will always remember during one of the very toughest nights of my mayorship, happened to be this past summer, that you and Rick Jennings came into my home and you hung out with me throughout a very, very long evening. It just kind of sat there and it spoke to me about how I know you are with your family and your friends and the people you love and who are loyal to, right? And that was me for a night as your mayor. But you stick by people and you stick with people. And you're a really good guy. And I'm glad we got the opportunity to serve together. And let me move to Steve Hanson, who I have such affection for and respect for as a student of government and is not just a good, but a really great policymaker. You know, it's harder to do policy at the local level. I mean, it's harder to do it at the local level. But all those gifts that you have, you apply not only on behalf of the toughest district in the city, I think, in terms of the diversity of interests and the challenges. But you also use those smarts and those skills to help solve some really, really difficult problems, especially around affordable housing. And measure you and some of the divisions and fights that we had amongst us on the council. You really helped me and helped our city and helped bring us together. And you are young and, you know, it is all in front of you, man. Whether it's politics, whether it is, as you alluded to, some other form of service, whether it's business, you know, in some ways, we've talked about this, I'm kind of happy for you. You've got Michael and Henry and, you know, this beautiful family. And you get to now devote a little more time, hopefully a lot more time, to them. And I have no regrets in my life. But I know that the years when my kids were little and they went fast as I was doing politics. And so, you know, a door closes and many other doors open. That's a cliche, but it's really true for you because you have an immense amount of ability and caring and love for people and for community. And we're going to stay in good touch. Appreciate you. And Larry Carr, another member who I never once had a disagreement with over four years together. Larry, I have immense respect for you, for your integrity, your integrity. You are not afraid to speak up and you speak your truth. And it always comes from a good place, always. And I want to say something to you that may surprise you a little bit because we've kind of gone back and forth over the years, as I know you have with your colleagues, about your insistence around governance reform, around the idea that, you know, the council should set the policy and then the management and the staff should implement it. And we should, in fact, evaluate them and evaluate our performance with that frame. And while we have disagreed maybe about the degree to which that is actually possible in a political environment where human beings are involved and so many judgments are subjective, I want to say to you something that is really right about what you have continued to push and that I will remember, that government must do a better job focusing on outcomes. We have to better job focusing on outcomes. And if we don't, no matter what we do around process, no matter what we do to try, the people are going to be dissatisfied unless we are moving towards those positive outcomes. And you really have reinforced that for me, I think for our city council and for our entire city. And so Patty, congratulations, you get him back. Same to Gina, by the way. And I already alluded to Michael. And I just want to say it's been an honor to serve with you as well, sir. So thank you. Let me now, let's go down the row here. Mayor Pro Tem.
See if I can get through this. I will try my best. As you guys know, my emotions are a little raw right now. And I care deeply for all three of you and two of you I'm extremely close to. So I have not been looking forward to tonight. But let me see if I can just try to get through this. I wanted to say how I feel about each of you, but also try to think of my favorite story about each of you. With Alan, this got dangerous quick because I just know too much. So I think I'll wait a little longer to tell too many Alan Wayne Warren stories. But I have some, some good ones. Probably one of my favorites is, this is, this has like happened so many times, I lost track. But I will often get a call from, say, like, the grant cheerleading instructor or the grant drum line. And it'll go something like this. Yeah, we need to raise $10,000 because we have to take folks back to Washington DC. And Alan Wayne Warren said he would match whatever you're giving us. So, you know, no pressure, but whatever I do, then they get double because Alan would have them call me first. Not a bad strategy, Alan. I, you know, two mayor had a really tough meeting set up one time that I was dreading at City Hall. And I was complaining to Alan about it, like I often do. And, you know, he did the same for me, Mayor. He said, you know what, I'm just going to come to that meeting. And he did, came to City Hall, he sat in my office, he sat next to me. He sat there for an hour and a half through that whole meeting just so I wouldn't have to be by myself in a meeting that I was dreading. And I'll never forget it. He's extremely supportive. And if there is one way to define Alan, one word, the word is very easy for me to choose. It's kind. He is very kind. Alan had a really rough childhood. And what I think about that is it turned him into a very gentle soul. Being the only boy because he lost his dad, helping raise seven sisters while still being younger than most of them, made him really kind and patient. And it's probably how he earned his nickname from KJ and I, which is Gandhi, how we refer to him all the time. Though my daughter calls him the Candy Man, as does much of his family. Because if you know Alan, you know that he has a perpetual sweet tooth. And if you ever want candy, you can always go to District Two, a fact that Aleah learned very early in her visits to City Hall. And Alan travels all over the world. You know that he always brings something back for my daughter. Bracelets from Cuba, candies from Costa Rica, little gifts, little dolls from Jamaica. Wherever he goes, he's always thinking about kids and how their lives can be better. And I remember one time talking to him about a program I thought would be good for youth employment. And he said to me, you know, kids shouldn't have to work, Angelique. We should have a society where the kids just get to be kids. And so Alan, I will miss you very, very much. I think you know that. And my wish for you is that your dedication to family and to Del Paso Heights, just because it's so admirable and because you're so kind, I hope that it all just pays off in endless success and joy for you. There is no one more deserving. You are a true gentleman and my friend, and I will miss you deeply. Steve. So funny how many people characterize my relationship with Steve. When he first ran, we did a flyer together and people asked me if we were husband and wife. And then when he got on the council, we fought like cats and dogs and people started calling us brother and sister and almost dismissing our arguments like, that's just Steve and Angelique. Then we did the same. Oh, that's okay. We just argued last week, but we're fine this week. And we've had a lot of fun. And for the most part, our political minds are very similar. So we philosophically land in the same spot oft enough that we've really been able to work together on some tough ones. I mean, I know a lot of people don't know this, but that arena deal came down to you and me finalizing that last agreement to get to seven votes. We wouldn't have had it without us. And I remember, I remember sitting there with you in John Dangberg's office, figuring out the final details of how we would get that across the finish line. I also, you know, my personal feelings about the LGBT community and how special and important that is to me, how central it is to me. I always just felt it was so, such a gift to get to serve with the first LGBTQ member in the city's history. And I will always treasure that. And you have done that community so proud, Steve, so, so proud. From little things like a flag to big things like housing for people with AIDS. None of those things would have happened without you. It's extraordinary dedication and leadership on your part. And you've heard everyone say tonight the same thing about you. If there is a word to describe you, it is intelligence. You are very, very smart. And you have had lots of good titles before and you'll have lots of good titles in the future. But I hope that you remember that your most important and most valuable title in your life will always be dad. And you're very good at that. And Henry is very lucky to have you. And I hope you'll focus this time on that sweet little angel. And I'm sure I will see you soon in some new and important capacity. Larry Carr, the person who shares my brain. Normally Larry and I don't even have to talk to be on the same page. I think what I will miss most about you, Larry, is your constant answer to this question. How are you doing? Doesn't get any better than this. I'm going to have to like put that in a quote somewhere on my wall so that I can continue to hear you saying that through, through the halls of City Hall. To me, Larry Carr is a teacher. Yes, he's been on the council and in the military and held all these other positions. But through all of those things runs the teacher's gene. That's what you were born to be and born to do. And for knuckleheads like the mayor and I, when we don't get something the first time you want us to get it, you will do something ever so subtle, like hang a George Patton quote on the wall of City Hall so that we walk past it every single day and know exactly what you want us to do. Ever the teacher and not going to allow us to escape your lessons. I appreciate it so much. The mayor actually told me a funny story about you the other day. So it was so funny. He said, I had my, like, one of my last meetings with Harry and his party words to me were about, hey, if you ever want me to come back and explain to you about good governance structure, just give me a call, you have my number, which I love so much because he's been singing from that song sheet so long. Mayor, if it makes you feel any better, he bought me a book and left it on my desk and told me to read it. How about good governance structure? So I'm really proud to serve with you, Larry. I think that, you know, you're everything good about public service. You're a guy from humble roots who went to the military, went to UCLA, has really has done wonderful things in your life, is a wonderful dad and grandpa and husband and friend and leader. And you're doing this, you've always done this for all the right reasons. And I'm just, I've learned a lot from you and I'm really proud to call you my friend on top of being my colleague. I will miss you endlessly, as you know. And I do plan to visit you in Napa because A, it's Napa and B, you'll be there. And I, as I told you earlier, I aspire to have an address that ends in Wine Barrel Way. That just seems like a really good retirement move. And I wish you a beautiful retirement, full of laughter from grandkids and delicious cuisine and wine in that beautiful city that you have chosen. Thanks for spending some of your time and energy on me, Larry. I appreciate you.
Thank you. That was beautiful. Thank you, Angelique. I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Harris, the mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, it's really hard to believe that I've worked with these people for six years. It seems like it's gone by in a flash. But, you know, every week I sat next to Alan Wayne Warren, while in between Steve and Alan Wayne. And, you know, we talk at the diocese, you know, we chum it up a little bit, argue sometimes. But that relationship has really been significant to me. I mean, that's, that's a big chunk of my life that I've served with these individuals, one on each side. And yeah, you know, in the civic life and being a public servant is not easy. It really is work, but it's joyous work. And we've all shared a lot in that joy and served, you know, through some of the travails. You know, Alan, you're, you're an interesting guy. It has been really fun to sit next to you. And all the things that, that Angelique said are true. You're kind of unflappable. You don't get too excited about much, you know? It's, it's, it's hard to ring your bell. And I appreciate that level-headedness, you know? You always looked at it as an issue. I remember when yourself and Mayor Steinberg and I took a very tough meeting in Woodlake. And, you know, it was, it was pretty heated. You know, some of those constituents, your constituents in D2 laid it on us pretty thick. It was no holds barred that night. And you were just calm and steady. And that was great to have that, you know? Because I probably am a little bit more hot-headed than you in that regard. But your, your calm kind of wafted over to me and kept me in this pretty sane place. So I appreciate that. You know, you are a builder and I'm a builder. And I'm really going to miss that camaraderie that we've had on the council. You know, your business savvy and the fact that you understand the construction world has been a source for us to be close and I've really appreciated it. You know, we've had some pretty interesting conversations over the years. And it's been good. It's been good. And I really wish you and Gina well and your kids. I know you're going to be just fine. And I know I sent you a text, go out there and make a lot of money. Go out there and make a lot of money, because you know what? You're capable of doing it and then take that money and do more good with it, because I believe you will. And now Larry, when I grow up, I wanna be like you. I you know, I I don't, I'm not sure I'll get there, but you have qualities that I would really like to emulate. You know, kind of similar to Alan, you're very calm and steady. I guess I'm attracted to that quality, right? But you know, you have a wisdom about you, just the wisdom of having done a lot of life. And I've enjoyed every conversation I've ever had with you. It's been fascinating. You're kind of an unusual person. You you think a little differently than most. And but I really appreciate your point of view. You've always been really forthright with me and, you know, told it like it was. You opened my eyes to policy governance. And I was proud to sit on that committee with you. I did learn a lot. You know, you've you've always said at council, hey, if we don't know what we want and what we wanna pay for it, how the heck are we gonna get? And you know, your aspect has changed the way I think about about the council and think about my presence in it and really made me thought, think deeply about how to shape the city, how to get where we want to go. You've been super valuable on the council. But I I just have to say, Larry, you are a really stand up guy. I appreciate you more than you know, and I can't wait to see you and Patty over there in Napa, because I I will be coming. And I look forward to that time. Steve, you know, our relationship has been, for me, certainly kind of deep and complex. I've thought of you as a son. I've thought of you as a colleague. I've thought of you as a friend. And sometimes we're like really querulous brothers, just going at each other. It's been all over the map, but through it all, I have a a very strong feeling of love for you, you know, quite frankly. You're a great guy. Sometimes confounding, sometimes extremely skilled and talented and strategic. Your oration goes a little long at times, but it's usually amusing. And sometimes there's a lot of wisdom in that, too. I will say this, you have been a tremendous council member for District Four. It's not an easy district to represent. It's been alluded to and you know, there are so many issues there and you have a wicked memory. Just your your attention to detail has stunned me at times. And it's been great because sometimes you'll bring stuff up that kind of jars me and makes me move in a different direction in my decision making. I've really enjoyed Henry and Michael, and I'm really thankful for the time that we shared. And you know, there will be more time that we share, I'm sure. So I'll be thinking about you plenty. You've done a lot on this council. You've left a real legacy behind in D four. And whoever, you know, Katie is gonna try to fill your shoes, but they are big shoes to fill. You've done a lot for the city and I appreciate it a lot. So to all three of you, it's been a profound pleasure to work with you. And it kind of feels like a family breaking up here in a way. I I didn't really realize until today how much I had settled in to knowing you would always be there, right? And now thinking, hmm, it's gonna be a fresh face in your spot. Well, we'll keep in touch. Thank you all for your service.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Very kind words. Let's turn it over to Councilmember Shneer, Jay.
Great. Well, I think we're gonna have to hire Alan and Larry to keep Jeff calm. Great. That's our consulting gig coming through. You know, I I first just wanna wish you all well. You know, there's a lot that has been said about the challenges of being a public servant. It it is tough and takes its toll on on family and and your life, but it's it's so rewarding when you can make a difference in your community. And I know for all three of you, you care so deeply about the communities in which you live and for some of you in which you grew up, you know, this is your home and will always be your home. You know, I I had an experience of of losing an election, so Larry, I know you you stepped out on your own, but it's kind of an interesting thing going off, like when I went off the school board. You you find yourself sitting there going, God, it's night and I have nothing to do. I don't have to go anywhere. I don't have to, you know, answer my phone. I don't have to get a bunch of texts complaining about things. And it takes a while. There's a transition period there between being the elected, being the person and then being the person who used to be the person, because you're not anymore. But I I just wanna say, you know, I I hope that you all take advantage of every moment that you have. Larry, I know you're already doing it. Alan and Steve, I'm sure following in the footsteps. You know, specifically in Alan, we worked together on the arena. I I hope that as you as you go to Kings Games, if we ever get to go to games again, you know, you take a lot of pride in in your name being up on the wall and being able to say, this is something that I played a huge part in and it probably wouldn't have happened without me. So that's, it's just a, it should be a good feeling and it's something you can show your kids and your grandkids when that when that comes along of, you know, this is a legacy to the work that I've done. And there were things that were that were large and small, right? I mean, the arena was a big project that you played a huge role in. But I know all the all the little things and the whatnots a little things that taco festivals that you had in your district. People remember that stuff and and I know again, how much you care about D two and and that even if you even if you are moving or you're not gonna live where you are, your heart will always be there. And I'm sure you'll always do everything you can to make a difference, particularly for young people in your area. Larry, it's always been fun. I mean, I knew you at SMUD. Certainly know you here. And I share a lot of the the principles that you have around governance, although it's sometimes difficult to do. But like others have said, I totally respect your ability to just shoot straight. You only talk when you have something to say and when you have something to say, it's it's always worth listening to. So I appreciate the service that you've done here. I I didn't realize, I mean, I knew you also when you were at Hiram Johnson teaching, when I was on the school board. But when you kind of rattled off all the stuff that you've done in how many years, I I was thinking you must have started when you were three or four years old to get all that in and and still be so young and so lively. So, you know, Jeff wants to be when when be you when he grows up. I think that's something we can all aspire to. And I I wish you well as as well and and hope that your time in Napa is fruitful with a with a barrel of wine. So there. And Steve, yeah, we I was there when you started. I remember knocking on doors for you in Land Park in your first election. You know, I I was talking to somebody about you the other day and said, you know, when you drive around downtown and I'm I work there, so I spend more time in downtown than any other district except my own. You can point to things and say, that's what Steve did. That's what Steve did. That wouldn't happen without Steve. Kind of your your institutional brain splattered all around District One in a good way. The Convention Center wouldn't have happened the same way. The the Bark Park. Ali Yosefi Square, which is just a monument that it turned out so beautiful. Again, I hope that when you and Michael and Henry walk around downtown, you can point to things and say, you know, I had a hand in that or or that was my idea and did it. You, I think, are probably the smartest person we have on the council. You will be sorely missed. And I think that, you know, you have a lot left in you to dedicate and and give to the city. And I'm I'm looking forward to that and hope that we can work together as you as you move forward. So to all three of you, just again, I wish you well. Enjoy. You you you've done public services, Daryl said, not an easy thing, sometimes lots of lot lots of challenges, but I've always thought when people say there's no thanks, there's plenty of thanks. When that young person, Alan, who was in your in the video for you says thank you, that's gotta mean more than anything in the world. When you see something that you've done and you can point to it, it just means a lot. So there's lots of thanks. It's just internal as you go. So enjoy.
Thank you, Jay. Eric, sort of getting?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I I wanna start off with with Larry. I mean, and first before that, I mean, I think everybody said the same thing. We wanna wish you all and I wish you all the the best and more time with your family because we do know how much time it it takes away from your your family. And 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 having worked for other elected officials, I I've seen what sacrifice they've done for their family. And now, you know, us serving as colleagues, I I know what what time commitment that is. So but I wanna start off with Larry first here because, you know, interestingly backstory, when I first met my wife, we were in two thousand and six, we were dating. And and she was a ghostwriter for one of your mailers. And and at that time, I said, one of the one of the the people that was working on your mailer asked her for asked her for some feedback and writing the mail piece. It was some kind of voter guide for the for the SMUD area. So I knew Larry Carr because he represented my ward and I said, hey, that's our ward boss there, you know? And and in the SMUD board, they have wards. So interesting backstory. And and not only that, but my neighbors, you know, all remember your work as a SMUD board member and Teresa Riviera never lets me forget that. Like, we gotta be with Larry Carr, you know? Consistently committed to the community, your comments and your voice about equity and justice and making sure that investments are there. You know, I I always feel like that that's been a a big legacy you've brought forward. You you understand what that's been like growing up in the South and then coming to Sacramento and bringing those the the experience of the military here. And you know, and again, thank you for your service. I mean, I think, you know, veterans like yourself have never stopped giving, they never stopped serving. And so working here on the council, you know, the the governance model, I appreciate that. I I remember going to a couple of special district conferences and, you know, slowly when I got on the air district and and sure enough, they presented us with the governance model, which was the book you had given me and put on my desk when I when I came into council. So it it can never get away from us. The, you know, and I do wanna concede to say that, you know, you've been an advocate for the issues of environmental justice. I know we had, that was a big conversation today. I mean, the fight that you were doing for the South area to making sure that the state recognized the air impacts down there and your work at the air district. And you know, you you walk the walk, right? You you have an electric vehicle. You also, you know, push for those improvements. You talk about reality too. You're like, yes, let's plant trees, but sometimes you can't do that. So let's this, you know, let's make sure that we also do a I coverings and employ people doing solar panels. So I just wanna say, Larry, it's been a pleasure working with you on that. And interestingly enough, I've I I'm proud that you were a representative of mine on the on the SMUD board and you always looked out for all of us who had the least and you carried that on when you were on the council, making sure that our u- our utility rates were were helping with with those issues. I'm gonna miss serving with you on on our numerous boards that when we run for office, never never are are told you're part of, right? You know, that no one votes for you to be on the air district or the sewer district or the water district or any of those, right? So thank you, Larry, with that. And 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 apparently the mailer worked well because you got reelected. So you should thank my wife too for that one. Interestingly enough, I I wanna go to Alan Warren next here because when when I decided to run for council, you know, not only my colleagues in the in the legislature and in the in the state lobbying effort at that time said, well, if you're gonna, if you're gonna run for office, you gotta go talk to Alan Warren. And one one person in particular, you know, Jim Lights, who, you know, who I think he might have been your treasurer for your first race. But Jim, Jim was a fellow of the Capital Fellows Program and he was, you know, an alumni of the program and I had gone through the program. And right off the bat, I mean, the the thing that he mentioned to me was how much you had grown up in the community. He had known you for a long time. And that your commitment to youth and kids was strong and and used sports or whatever way that you could get them engaged. You didn't care what it was that got kids engaged, but making sure that they were engaged and looking at at any any opportunity to succeed, you know. And and then the next person that came up to me was Dr. Al Brown, my my Sac State professor. So he reached out to me and 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 said, hey, if you're gonna run for council, you gotta reach out to Alan Warren. You know, and I didn't even know who this Alan Warren guy was. So because one, I didn't follow baseball all that much. If you wanted, if you didn't play for the Giants, then I didn't really care, you know, so. But 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 they were, but Al Brown was like, no, Eric, you gotta, you gotta go, you gotta go talk to Alan Warren. And 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 sure enough, you know, when I met with Alan Warren, we talked about some of the issues. We talked about like the challenges that that face like in the Stockton Boulevard and Del Paso Heights and those and tough issues about kind of reinvesting in them. And and Alan was the one of the first people who actually endorsed me and and pushed me to run for council and told me to keep my chin up and and that, yeah, you know, some people aren't gonna support you, but you gotta do it anyways. And so Alan, I I appreciate that. You know, your commitment to that. And and lastly, I wanna I wanna thank you for your advice, you know, as a father. And I could tell your commitment to your your kids and your family. Your son speaks impeccable Spanish, you know, you know. And and the fact that, you know, you expose him and to all kinds of 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 communities throughout Latin America, Honduras, Cuba, Mexico. You know, the the fact that you you bring that in there, I I gotta tell you. And when I when I started to when my son was born, you you were very open about, you know, hey, there, these are the the challenges of being a father and 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 what, you know, how much commitment it really takes. And and I appreciate that because I'd already lost my dad, you know, he had he had already passed away. So I wanna thank you for that personal advice. So so thank you, Alan. I I appreciate that. You're gonna keep fighting on. I know your your buddies are gonna keep bugging me. And lastly, I wanna say, thank you for carrying my water on the golf course. And so I I I anytime you wanna give me some tips, I appreciate that, you know. And the city wouldn't have won without you. Still, an eagle shot on the eighth hole of Land Park out of the sand trap, never forget that. I'm sure Rick is saying, you know, that's the that's the, you know, prove it. You should get the video of it, but but it was there. I saw it. So thank you, Alan. Appreciate all your service to the city. And last, I wanna I wanna end with, you know, my dear friend, Steve Hanson. Seventeen years ago, when, you know, I decided to make a shift in my career to to public policy and and not pursue engineering anymore. The person who was waiting in the lobby to welcome me at the state legislature was Steve Hanson. It was, I remember being in the Lieutenant Governor's office and just, you know, you know, feeling obviously overwhelmed of being in the state legislature and and, you know, you know, just kid right out of college and only had exposure to to working at a at the transportation lab. But Steve was very relaxed the whole time, made me feel like, you know, you know, this was a no big thing, you know, and and the level of confidence that you had. Man, I I appreciate that because that that stuck with me through the rest of the interviews that I had and and I got selected. It's a very competitive program. You know, and so Sandra Perez says hello. She she also, you know, appreciated your time as a fellow and also reminded me that you were also sometimes a pain in the butt too as a fellow. And I said, yeah, that that sounds like my experience with you on the council too, you know, so always very involved. So you know, you and I, we we worked on a lot of issues, zip vision zero and the efforts we're doing now for street safety, for reducing speed limits, for making it safer for a lot of the 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 cyclists and maybe some, you know, as 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 we work together on this. In in my neighborhood, that's the only transportation some people have. They couldn't afford anything else. And your commitment to making sure that that was it, not just for recreational purposes, you know, but for actual, you know, people who don't have other choices. Public transit and fighting for that because, you know, I and I think you and I partnered a lot on those issues. And shortly after, you know, Donald Trump got elected, you were one of the first ones. You and the mayor that that came and and we sat together to figure out how we were going to create a legal defense program to help our sacramentants who are underserved. Your relationships with McGeorge Law, your colleagues in the in the in the law of legal profession, you know, really piecing together something that now the Vera Institute nationally has talked about. We've surpassed the support that other cities have. You really stepped in and we wouldn't have that support that has now educated over two hundred and fifty educators without your work. You you helped put that that together. And so I just wanna say, you know, you know, it's it's been great, you know, I wish our kids could be playing together during COVID. You know, it's not, it's You know, it's not, it's, they're, they're at that right age where they were the same age, but you know, he is almost two times size as my son, but you know, they love to play with each other. And it's a bummer that they can't be together. So I just want to say, Steve, thank you for for being a dear friend, for working so much on this and somebody who is an advocate for science and STEM, because that's what got me and my family out of poverty. The Powerhouse Science Center, the fact that that's happening in our city. I mean, people, school districts and everywhere, go to the Bay Area to go to try to get that kind of experience, that's going to happen here. You're going to create opportunities for so many kids because you may, you put the will to make it happen. And with that, every kid in the future can point to that and say, you want Steve Hanson? He made that happen. So with that, thank you, Steve. Thank you, Larry. Thank you, Alan. It's been a pleasure working with you. And as Larry already texted me, he's not going away. We're, we're pulling him in to do some of our work here too. So thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you, Eric. I'm glad you mentioned the Powerhouse Science Center as well. I forgot that, Steve, really. Legacy. True legacy. Rick Jennings, last but not least, council member Rick Jennings.
Well, I'll be pretty quick because my battery is starting. It just gave me a signal that I'm kind of low. So I'll be kind of quick. I sent a letter to each one of the these gentlemen earlier today. And if it's okay with them, I'd like to read part of that letter, parts of it.
Sure.
And it'll allow me to get through it a little bit quicker. I'm going to start with Alan Wayne Warren because when I first ran for council in two thousand and fourteen, Alan Wayne Warren was the council member that represented the district that I worked in, District Two. And, you know, Alan looked like me, Alan was athletic like I, Alan was a developer, and I, I always wanted to be a developer. Alan was an elected official, and I wanted to be an elected official. And Alan was a golfer, and I wanted to be a better golfer than he. So I kind of looked at Alan from a competitive standpoint. So I want to be like Alan when I grow up. But anyway, Alan, what I wanted to let you know is that I watched you from, from afar on many days, watching you not only as an elected official, but watching you as a father and as a husband and as a community change agent. And I just want to let you know that you taught me directly and indirectly a lot of things about being a public servant. And I just want to stop and thank you. I want to thank your family first, Gina and your family, for allowing you to give us so much time to do the work that we have to do as public servants. I want to thank you for going back home to serve your community, the community that you grew up in. I want to thank you for the homes that you built as a developer and the people who are in those homes, many of them first time home buyers. Many of them, it's their second home that they've moved up from the first home. I want to thank you for being a great father, an incredible husband, and a super change agent. And I want to thank you for pushing me to be a better leader. I want to thank you for being a mentor, a role model, and especially always a friend. And I want to thank you for being Alan Wayne Warren. There's, there's only one, the one and only Alan Wayne Warren. And I want to give you a scripture to carry you with. You can read it on your own, but it's Jeremiah twenty nine eleven. And I'll give you that scripture to say, you take that forward. And I know that everything that you do in life will be successful as everything that you've done in life has been successful. So I want to thank you for your years of service, and I want to thank you for being my friend. Thank you, Alan Wayne Warren. Steve Hanson. Steve, my friend, I'm going to miss you. I'm going to miss your presence at the city council meeting. I'm going to miss your friendship, your guidance, your leadership, your wit, your humor. And as somebody said, that wicked memory, your institutional knowledge. I learn a lot just by listening and watching you. And I know that I'm a better public servant because I've watched you and I've listened to you and I've seen how you've governed your district and the things that you've done in order to make your district better. And so I just want to let you know personally, from me, your presence will be missed. And I deeply appreciate the friendship that we've developed, especially later in our time together. I want to thank you for stepping up to leadership in every different way possible. All the different boards and commissions that we serve on, you've always stepped up to leadership. I want to thank you for your wit and your humor. On some of these late night meetings, we need that wit and humor to keep us going. I want to thank you for your wicked memory because it's something that we can always count on, and it makes us focus on making our own memory better. I want to thank you for being a teacher to me. I want to thank you for being a friend to me. And I also want to thank you for sharing Michael and Henry with all of us. We are better because of you and your family. So I want to thank you, and I wish you the very best going forward. And I said to you, I hope that you will avail yourself to me and to us whenever I call or whenever we call, whether it be by text, whether it be by telephone call, or whether it be by pigeon that we send in order to get your attention. I hope that we will maintain our friendship, and I wish the very best for you and your family. So Steve, my friend, I wish you the best. And then to my mentor Larry Carr, my seatmate. Larry, I will always remember what I've learned from you as a public servant. Your logical, no nonsense, get to the point tools, they will stay with me for the rest of my life. And even though we're not much difference in age, I look up to you just like I looked up to my Uncle Tommy. I always knew that you were there for me and that you would always be there when I needed. You are a true mentor and a friend, and you have served District Eight well. You have served the city of Sacramento well. So I want to thank you for always showing up and showing out. I want you to enjoy the quietness and enjoy your family in retirement. I want to thank you for your commitment to service, whether it be to the military, to the smud board, and or to the city council and all the other JPAs that you serve on as well. Like I said, I want to thank you for showing up and showing out, for supporting me, my dreams, my vision, for supporting the dreams and the vision of the constituents in District Eight. I thank you for always asking the questions that I thought that I was going to ask when I had the mic, but I didn't, and you did. And I thank you for always covering my back on those questions that I should have asked, but I didn't. And thank you for being logical, no nonsense, get to the point. Why are we here? Like I say, enjoy the quietness, enjoy your family, enjoy watching the grass grow. Thank you for being a friend that we can always count on.
Hey, what a, what a memorable evening. And I will just say that this isn't goodbye because you're still all in office until next Tuesday at five o'clock. So keep working. You guys, every, every bit of the tribute to all of you really, really deserved. And thank you for, thank you for serving the people of Sacramento, the city we all love. It's incredible. Okay, we have two public speakers, an item is not on the agenda, and then we will adjourn.
May I have my first caller? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Wow, I, this was the last thing I wanted for my day on Tuesday, and I was looking to talk about item twenty three, but which was about the racial equity initiative. And unfortunately, you also have a profoundly inequitable public comment system that cuts people off, cuts callers off for participating on items on the agenda the moment they begin. And you provide no instruction whatsoever for that in your agenda, on the automated call line, and people that are coming off of work, who work nine to five jobs, who may even have like kids, who they even have to feed dinners that they have to make, and other, like other dependents, and other things that they might have to do with their evenings, have to literally wait the moment that city council begins in order to just wait for this particular item. And on top of dealing with the dysfunctional system that then drops their calls as they're waiting and then loses their place in line. They can be waiting, like, I waited on these calls for two hours at some point. And then getting cut off just before you start the item, and then I can't call back in. So if we're talking about like making Sacramento City equitable, you can start with a public comment system line, which you instructed Mayor Steinberg, the city clerk, to talk to the, like, anybody that was on the line for item twenty four that you punted for a later date. You told her to, like, to let those folks know that we're waiting on the line to do that. Like, so that you were putting it off, and we wouldn't have public comments on that. That didn't happen at all. I was waiting on that line. So it really goes to show how much you really care for constituent feedback.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Sure. Can't say that I'm going to miss anybody that's leading this council, Steve, Alan, Larry.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, my name is Lambert Davis, Jr., up to the bay and back cheesecake. I want to take time tonight to pay my respects to a wonderful human being, city councilman Alan Wayne Warren. You have inspired a lot of young people in Del Fossil Heights. Being a grad high school alumni, you've actually inspired me as an entrepreneur. And as you can see, I've been fighting city hall a long time. I'm probably going to be fighting them long after you're gone because To The Bay And Back Cheesecake should get funded. I hope Mayor hears me and the rest of the people that should vote for us. But I wanted to say to you, since I met your father back when I was in Little League, he was wonderful to my brother and I. And we always remembered that. And so when you decided to do what you do, you can best believe Lambert Davis, Jr. was right there with you. And you can best believe I'll be with you after you leave there because I'm your friend before you went in, during, and after. So God bless you and Gina, and I hope you live long and prosper because you deserve it. I can't think of anyone who's been in a more segregated jury-mandered district, probably in California. So for you to get anything accomplished in Del Fossil Heights was a miracle with all of the different associations and districts who pulled you in different directions. Somebody had to say it. I might as well qualify myself to speak on that. And to Mr. Carr, good luck. You did a wonderful job coming from the Confederate, the cradle of the Confederacy that states your positions. And last but not least, Mayor, I'm really reaching out to you to fund us. We are completely viral now. There's very few people that aren't aware of us, very few.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Thank you, Lambert, as always for calling in. We do have two adjourned memories before we formally adjourn the meeting. I'll start with Vice Mayor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. A few days ago, I lost a very dear friend, a man named Carl Bradley, who lived in my district. He worked for Union Pacific for many years, was a Western Regional Manager. I met Carl working on the rebuilt McKinley Playground project. He was a real steadfast volunteer and contributed a lot to that project. Got to know him well, found out that he was maybe the best cook on the face of the planet. So I started hanging around his house an awful lot, hoping hoping to get some handouts. He was the kind of person that you just loved to talk to because it was always easy and it always flowed. He was always jovial, and he had stories like nobody else. Grew up, I think, in Arkansas, lived in Texas, came out here and found the love of his life, Kathy Taylor, who I think some of you know, who also passed away just three years ago. You know, this man believed in me when I was running for council when very few people did. He actually believed I could pull it off, even though I was unknown and had no money. And, you know, that was a huge boost for me. He was, he leaves behind a huge fan base in Sacramento. Everybody you met in here loved him dearly. He ended up working up in Cap Sacramento. So he was doing a lot of work up there, maintenance and, you know, working with the programs. And that's where I met Jen West. And they became very good friends. And Carl is the person who introduced Jennifer West to me. And as you know, she subsequently was my executive assistant for five years. Boy, was that a great stroke of luck for me, and I thank Carl very much for that. He was just fun to be around anytime. Carl, we're all going to miss you. A whole bunch of people in Sacramento are going to miss you. So that's my adjourned memory, Mayor, a great, a great Sacramento and a great guy.
Our condolences to you, Jeff, and to the community and to his family. Finally, Councilmember Hanson, why don't you have the last word tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. Many of you might have known Lori McBride. She was a longtime resident of Land Park. She actually grew up on Tenth Avenue and inherited the house that she grew up in when her parents passed. She and her wife Donna, of thirty five years, were very involved in the LGBT community. In fact, early in Lori's career, before she moved back to Sacramento, she formed the Golden Gate Business Association, one of the first LGBT chambers of commerce. But when HIV and AIDS became one of the biggest challenges in our community, in our LGBT community, she stepped up and she started working to make sure that those men who were dying were not alone. She made sure that the community had a voice. She ended up leading the charge against two very discriminatory state ballot measures that would have forced people with HIV and AIDS into quarantine had they passed camps, basically. She later took over the helm of Life Lobby, a LGBT advocacy group that was statewide. She ran that group for almost ten years. And she helped pass early non-discrimination protections through the legislature, AB one oh one, which made sure that you couldn't fire somebody simply because they were LGBT. She did many other things, including founding the local Stonewall Democrats, was on the National Board of the Stonewall Democrats for ten years. She has been a mentor and a friend to many. I was proud to know her early in my life as I got involved in the local Stonewall chapter, got to know her and her wife. And later, when I was running for office, pleased that they were some of the biggest champions on Tenth Avenue in Land Park. Donna and Lori retired a few years ago to just outside of Chico, ironically, outside of Paradise, where everybody knows there was a horrible fire. And just like Lori's training, she stepped into the breach. She formed a food bank for people that were displaced by the fire. She worked with the community, formed a new community group to hold local governments accountable. And that's basically what she did after Life Lobby. She joined Antonio Villagosa's office. And when he was Speaker, she went on to work for Kevin Shelley as a Deputy Secretary of State. She worked for Kevin Murray, a state senator from LA. And she was proud of her Democratic politics. She was proud to fight for the rights of people, but she was a giant in our community. And she is one of the people whose shoulders I stand on in this role. And it's my honor to dedicate tonight in her memory. She passed away Friday of a heart attack, and she was only seventy one, but she lived. She passed away Friday of a heart attack and she was only 71, but she lived boldly and she was funny. And she will be remembered, my condolences to her wife Donna, to her best friend, Sam Catalano, who many of you know, and to our LGBT community here in Sacramento and to everybody else who knew and loved her.
Civil rights pioneer. I thank you, even Lori's memory as well. Members, the end of a bittersweet evening. Thank you to all the members who are leaving, your families, and Godspeed to you. We will miss you, but we'll see, I'm sure we will talk to you often. If there's nothing else to come before the city council, we are adjourned.